Great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wellington Board of Education meeting. It's Tuesday, August 27th, 2025. We are calling the meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. We have a special agenda this evening. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. My nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda, on this lovely back-to-school eve, we have President to speak. If you are online, go ahead and raise your hand. And we'll get you unmuted. There's nobody in the room for the record. For those of you just joining us, we're doing President to speak. If you would like a turn, please raise your hand or turn on your camera. Okay, we'll have another opportunity at the bottom of the agenda if you would like to share your thoughts then. The agenda for is new business. We are talking about the educational specifications this evening. This is the document prepared by the President, uh, the President Day. The, uh, let's see, Board of Education members who worked on this, um, they completed it on October of 2022. So that is the document that we'll be looking at this evening along with some updated information from QA and M. That was published on August 7th of this year. And we're talking about this in preparation for our meeting at September 1st. We'll talk a little bit more about the legislation and financing of school building projects. So where do you like to begin?
So that's kind of up to you. Um, I see that Rusty's in, Rusty and Mike, you can unmute whenever you want. Will you do me a favor? I'll burrow over that? Just, just in preparation, if you know what I'm talking about. Thank you. I pulled the, the first time the ed specs were done. Um, we did two presentations and I can actually fire through these. I, I think that the idea here is to like, give some background on that specs first. Um, so these are all documents and I think between slides. Um, if you go on to, let me see, yes. So this is the basically the school districts webpage. And if you go on to District Information, School Building Committee, it'll take you to this page. If you scroll down, you can click on ed specs and all three of the documents that we're going to talk about tonight are here. The only one that's not is the QA and M one that's updated. That is the additional. So the first thing I was going to show you, um, this is the first session that the board did. And I'm literally, I thought it might make sense for me to fire through so you know some of the background of how this was developed. Um, so the purpose of the ed spec is basically to identify the programs, you know, what's your philosophy? And then match it to spaces, um, and facilities. Uh, and again, I'm going to go through this really fast. All right. Uh, as part of that, your identification, your features, building features, school programs, classroom features, any specialty areas. And so as part of that, I was showing the board at the time, uh, some outdoor features, things that we were talking about, you know, on the right side picture, outdoor pavilions. Um, they had, you know, community gardens that were part of this, sports fields that were condensed in. So you could have a softball, baseball and soccer field into one that's turfed. Um, the bottom picture is a one in yellow is a bus lane, right? And so that's different than the drop-off traffic in this picture. Uh, and then, you know, the playground. So the idea is what outdoor spaces you want as whether you're doing a, uh, in your ed spec is that's whether it's a renovation or a new build. Okay? When you get to the building features, they go through what types of things you're looking for. So, you know, natural light, the technology you want and you have to meet code, obviously. If you're doing anything modern, like with electrical plumbing, you know, geothermal that people, so I think it was Mansfield went net zero. And I'm not recommending that at all. I'm just telling you that, um, that's what they did. Um, you know, do you want solar? All of those things are the types of things when you start thinking about building features. Some of the additional things that were put in, obviously ADA you have to do, but like, we don't have a loading dock at either school. So when we do it, get a delivery, having a loading dock would be something that we would want to try to address. All right. So it's in here. Then you start talking about, you know, finishes that are easy to, to maintain, uh, things like that. Hi Sam. Um, you know, bathrooms in close proximity. So some of the building features that are built into your space. Okay? And then into the specific programs, you list your programs. So your list of programs that they came up with, obviously these are, it's what, what's there. Um, it's basically what you have, those steam as I would say fizzled a bit. That might be a space that you may be able to take off and get a little footage, uh, but pretty straightforward. Uh, the picture in the bottom center is Birchgrove's Gym. Uh, that is what we call a gymatorium. So low, low level stage, uh, soundproof wall. Uh, you on the stage is actually a, uh, a classroom. Um, so that's where the music person teaches. All right. Uh, and then actually they have a gymatorium cafeteria as well. Because beyond that, they have the cafeteria would be to the left of the gym space. Um, so again, just identifying the spaces, what the classroom features are. All right. And so things that what's happening in there. So we want grades fluttered together, which they're not. Things that are, you know, you've got your PA system, you've got your security, you've got acoustic all the stuff, you know, thought into this movable furniture. So it's flexible spaces. Sinks, storage is always is one of those things that kind of gets left behind bathrooms for certain places, whiteboard, whiteboards, promethium boards. So again, what goes into a classroom? So that was, that's built into the big document. Uh, if there's any specialty area features, things like breakout spaces, which if you look at this top right photo here, that's like a breakout space in a foyer. All right. Um, if you have a TV lab, if a life skills program, if you have, you know, if you want science labs, those are things that you would build into your specialty spaces. And then obviously the unified obstacles like that. All right. The library maker space theme is that it was named learning comments in this mix. Um, and so that's something that when you had see in your ed spec, you're going to see that. If there's any cool features, you know, magnetic whiteboards, things like that, that is built in someplace in, in the writing of the, um, but if you want real specific spaces for like breaks or classroom spaces, flex spaces in the hallways. Um, that's where you see like this bottom right or, or the middle or the, the left here. So that was the full first session of discussion on ed specs. The second night went into, um, identifying some of the space. And again, I'm just going to skip through some of this. So we took, uh, I went out and gathered a bunch of staff feedback. And so things that they were looking for is what they thought would be meaningful. This is their list. So cabinets first, you know, I don't think there was anything that was in here that were like, oh, good catch. Um, but they did come up with a really good list. Um, and so these are all built in. Things could consider like, do you put a half tile, half carpet room in, in your elementary, your middle schools do all tile, things like that. More, that's exactly what's limiting you. These are things that they identified as some of the issues. And so this is what we would want to address through the ed spec. Obviously HVAC was one of them, some of the narrow dark spaces. Um, some of the things like, um, you know, the book malls and the cafeteria right now, the, the book mall and cafeteria center has turned into our sort of storage for CKLA. We're, we're making those things work. Um, but you could do that different if you did a renovation or build. Okay? So again, they identified a bunch of things. If we renovate or new, again, I, I can, I'm glad to go through these if you want, but you get the idea that there was staff feedback and they put, that's what came into the full ed spec. And then it's broken down into how we did it was grades pre KK, one to four, and then five day, kind of the, the middle school model, the elementary model, and then really early education. All right.
Can we go, not now, but when we're nearing the end of our, our discussion, if we could go back and check against those staff things to be sure that we, and even if a small group of us did it or something, just so that we've addressed everything that.
Well, they may have wishes on there that you just.
Better not really.
Yeah, can't do, but for sure. And honestly, if you're going to adjust the ed spec, it probably should go back out to staff again for feedback.
That's a good way to do it. Yeah, thank you.
So again, just the specific spaces and, and the idea here was as this was being built, just to show the board, what types of things we are looking at. So the top picture is a science lab, the bottom picture of the whiteboard walls with movable tables. Um, and then the middle picture is a keyboard lab, but it's getting natural light from other spaces. John's kind of doing, staying up participants. Sorry. Yeah, sorry. And again, this is online. So you can look at this real close. It's just, I wanted to fly through this for you. Again, special ed spaces identified in here, what you do for administrative area spaces. Um, the picture on the bottom here is actually Toleum High School. Um, so you come into a grand foyer. I'm not recommending this very open, um, meeting space for staff. Uh, the full glass for the wall for into the cafeteria, lots of natural light in the space. It's a very underused space when I was there. Um, but it's just to show you some things. All right. So.
Fill this up glass that, that bullets cannot penetrate.
Yes.
And.
Bulletproof glass. Yeah.
Is that a safety?
It's going to be into your, yes. Okay. You could build it into your plan.
Thank you.
Um, things like how do you do, uh, if you do a gymatorium? Do you need to do bleacher seating or could you do seats? And if the picture to the bottom left there is actually like seat back seats that pushes in, it's not bleacher seating. You may lose some seating, but it's a little bit higher quality. So when you think about options and opportunities of how you spend your money and what it looks like and, uh, how do you make a, a stage space more appealing, meaning that, you know, like without, if you didn't do an auditorium, it's, there are things you can do. Okay? Um, yes.
Sorry, I got here a little bit late. So I'm not sure if you already said this. So are we, right now, are we just, are we going to talk about this afterwards? Are we asking questions throughout or?
I was just firing through the picture first to ship before we got into the, so you can see some of how it was developed.
Okay.
And then as we go through, I think, um, and Rusty and Mike are in the, um, on Zoom. Um, I think it's going to be important for them to chime in about, they changed some of the numbers and why of how they brought your numbers down. You have the side by side on your, on your paper. Um, and I also can fly through like the big document to show you. Um, all of this information went into the big doc.
This is the one from 2021?
This is 22, it was approved in 22.
May, okay. But this, so this thing was May 11th, 22. Okay. So it's kind of showing late.
This was November 8th of 22 was when the ed spec was finalized. And to get to that ed spec finalized, this is part of the process, what we went, the board went through. So like looking at mechanical rooms and, you know, I mean, you, but, um, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say, so like if I, so one of my questions is off the top of my head, just because I'm not familiar with the original. Um, ed specs is when we, I know that pre K or preschool is a big thing for the town, like a town need. Um, so my question is, is in these ed specs, my question was hard to, how did we plan for that? So do you want me to ask it now or do you want me to wait till later?
I would say hang on and.
Okay.
Yeah. Cause I think the idea will be to go through.
Okay. I can wait.
He's got it on there. Yeah.
I wasn't sure what the setup of what you're doing was. Thanks.
So you've got all the service areas that were built in, any of the edge, you know, outdoor spaces are, are built into this. Um, and so we went from this document into, and obviously I'm going through this really fast. This took some time. Then went into this. And so when we go into, and I'm going to go through this really fast. Again, this is what I sent you. Um, having some sort of introduction, what's the project rationale? Why are we doing this? Why are we addressing this as the age of the buildings, condition of the buildings? What's the background here? Um, what do people need to know? Um, and then what is the actual project? All right. And so we, all the things when we talked about sites, we talked about the same things that I just addressed, like, hey, you're looking at anything outdoors, field space. You're looking at all of those things. If it was new, can you get, um, electric and you get water? All of those things are things that are considered. Okay? Obviously everything is, is coming up to code and standard, whichever, you know, project. Um, and again, I'm going through this fast, but general building features I addressed, the technology is there. And state, it just says state of the art security systems. And the reason it says that is because you don't want those specific things written into your ed spec. You don't always want to advertise everything you've done. And that's intentional. Uh, there are certain things you would build in like a double left of you. People can see that, right? But that's stuff that, um, when you say state of the art security, it's probably one of the areas that doesn't have every detail spelled out. Okay? Um, it goes into what the viable bases are, what the special education spaces are, UA, any other programs that we had, you know, thinking about steam or, or science labs, things like that. Um, we had a school-based health center. So that was listed on here. Things like conference rooms, what do we do cafeteria? And then basically it's just, you know, if you think about what Rusty gave back to you, this is what he pulled it from. So here's our academic classes and he basically said, okay, it was 900 square feet. Here's what I believe it could, it could be to bring the number down. And he went through all of these. So again, now academic classes, specialized room. So it's matching the program with the space with a square footage. And that's how the developing cost, right? And the number of spaces is based upon the enrollment projection. All right. Uh, and so it goes through all of these items that I just mentioned, common areas is, isn't, and always an interesting one. This is where the, um, the gym, if you were doing an elementary school, it'd be smaller than that, but because it's a middle school pre K eight, it's larger. Uh, the auditorium was built into this particular ed spec, um, because it's one, it's something that you want. Right? Or I should say the prior board that did it, right? Um, and then the grocery factor. So at, when this was developed, it was 83,000 square feet. All right. Um, I am going to show you the rest of this just real quick. There's explanations in here of what that looks like. So when you talk about pre K, what goes into those classes? It was these things. What's in there for a toilet sink, classroom storage, teacher storage, student storage? What goes in there? We spelled those things out. So it goes into furniture, um, for students, for staff. Spells all those details out into the specific for each area now. So for elementary classrooms, right? Grades one through four, it lays it out. Here are the details of, of what we, you know, built in natural light, all of those things. And then it went to middle school. Same thing. What are the breakout rooms, teacher spaces? What do you need in there? Same thing. It just spells out all the details of what you're looking for. And then any of the specialized rooms, science labs, what are you looking for? You know, how many sinks? What do you have for storage all the way through? So it basically goes through all of those programs. I'm just going to skip to the bottom of this. It spells out basically the details of what was wanted. Show you one more thing. Again, that's a lot of detail. It's about what the, what we're looking for. Um, and the last section was around environment systems and equipment. And basically it just spells out the things that you would want to address. So what, what, and it's general, but like, you know, to say that you're, you're have high performance schools, high performance schools, you have to say that because that's what they want. So that's, you know, Connecticut high form, performance, performance building standards, that's in here. Um, what are you looking for? You know, heating, cooling, consider geothermal. What do you want for climate control ventilation? Now it doesn't come down and say, we want X boiler, we want hot water or, or we want gas. We want, you know, um, oil, we want everything from the, from the herb. It doesn't say that. It just basically says it's got to be high performing. It's got to be, you know, consideration on price. Same thing for all of this. And so lighting, ventilation, electric, security, phones. So all of the details for those things are built into this document. And then the last thing was the, the, um, enrollment projection. So, um, Rusty and Mike, I know that you are on the call. You should be able to unmute, unmute yourself guys anytime you want. And so what they did was, I guess maybe I should stop there for a second. Are there any questions about how it was developed the first time around? Um, and gathering information and putting it into a document? Hi Rusty.
Good evening.
So all of those details, basically then, um, what Rusty and his team QA and M did is they took, I think after the last conversation and he watched the video, um, where State Rep Nuccio was here. I shared that with him. So he's watched that. Um, and what he did is he took the ed spec that was approved. Um, and that's what you see, uh, what's at your table and I will put that on screen. And he basically went through and identified the left column is your ed spec Wellington, what was requested the first time. Uh, and then what the proposed column is, is QA and M. Uh, and Rusty, I'm going to make some general comments and I think it'd be good for you just to jump in and, and share. But I basically went through all of the, I'll call it the comparison and I, I, there may be some things that he moved to a different spot, but for the most part, it's not one area except for what I believe came out was the auditorium. Um, for the most part, the change is like 50 square feet here, 50 square feet there. Um, I don't think it was a drastic cut to any specific thing. It was basically like, if you look at the core academic classrooms right here and you look at, you know, what was requested was 900. And he put in his 850. That is kind of where I would say, well, I've noticed where the extra square footage came from. And go ahead.
Sorry. When you, when you're comparing, I just want to make sure I understand the numbers that you're comparing, suggesting that they're not, that they're not that different. So like the, in the first column, um, in the middle versus the second column in the middle is what you're talking about.
Yeah. So if you look at what I have highlighted right there. So if you look at the pre K classroom, the ed spec program column, that is our Wellington, what was approved or what was requested. So we wanted a 900 square foot classroom. We wanted two pre K spaces for a total of 1,800 square feet. Rusty kept the number as needing two, but adjusted it to 850 square feet, saving 100 square feet. So he brought the numbers down. And basically you can look at like almost everything in that first, this whole first section for academic. That's what he did. Um, it was down like maybe 80 square feet or 30 square feet or 50 square feet. You can just go down and compare those columns. Um, I think that's what they did all pretty much all the way through.
So why were the reductions necessary?
So Rusty, do you want to speak to, um, your recommendation, your proposed column and, and, um, how that space still meets the, you know, the need and also, um, why you did it?
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so let me just clarify that there, there are two versions here. Uh, and what I mean by that is when we were talking and we did the presentation earlier on, we were down around 60,000 square feet, a little over 60,000 square feet. That was truly just a comparison of what the allowable square footage is for a, based on the space standards for, for the number of students. And the goal, because that's what the state looks for. So what we wanted to emphasize is that's the number you would need to come down to, to meet the space standards. And we got a lot of comments back in that, well, what do you, what did you eliminate in order to get there? So that's one aspect of it. This, the second column here that we're going to talk about is about, around 72,000 square feet. And what I want to focus on is what did we eliminate, uh, to get down to that lower number? Um, and really where, what, what we did is number one, we reduced the, the square footage of, of all those spaces. But then there were a lot of spaces that we've, uh, you know, we said, well, in order to get down to that, not something we're recommending that you eliminate, but it was just an exercise in how do we get down there? So we looked at educational classroom spaces. For instance, in that scenario, we only had one art room. And in the new, in the proposed, um, ed spec here, uh, we have two art rooms. Um, in that earlier proposal, we, um, had eliminated the flex rooms that you have. And in, in, in the case here in your program, you have a grade one through four flex classroom with support spaces. And a grades five through eight flex classroom with support spaces. You also have, in addition to the regular classroom, you have two science labs, um, the steam room and yet another flex classroom. So we didn't eliminate the science labs, for instance, but we eliminated the flex rooms and to, to get that number down. Uh, and that's how we worked through and said, okay, how can we try to optimize the space? We're not saying that that's the recommended program, the program that you have is the, the right program for an educational facility. Uh, we would, that was just an exercise in how do you get and what's, what are the sacrifices to get from what should be the program to let's meet the, the space standards because of the constraints of the financial constraints, for instance. So that's what, what, what the exercise was. Um, this comparison that we proposed is saying, okay, keep all your program spaces. Um, and, and maybe there's some discussion about a few of them, but, but, uh, you know, go down in square footage um, and see what that impact is. And so we, we were at the 80 some thousand square feet in the original program. This then brings us down to the 72,000 square feet. Now keep in mind, we're still over the space standards. So we would have to consider that if we build to that level, we would be exceeding the space standards.
Steve, what is the number for our space standard?
I'm sorry?
What is the number for our space standard that we're allowed to go?
It's around 60,000. That's, that's what we were trying to, uh, you know, put together and put a budget to. Because when you do a renovate his new school and you're supposed to then compare to a new school, um, you have to base the, the square footage of the new school on the space standards. So, and that also tells you, okay, that's the number that we have to try to get to. And that's the dilemma that small school districts have is you can, it's very, very, almost it's, it's impossible to meet all your educational programs and meet that space standard criteria that they've established, that the state has established. So, uh, you know, with that, you, you have to realize that, that, you know, as we've said in previous meetings, your gym is the size of your gym. You can't say we're going to be, but a half a gym in there because it doesn't really work. Uh, classrooms have to have a certain minimum square footage. Science labs need to be of a certain size. So all those things are, um, great when you have an enrollment that may be one and a half or twice this, uh, the. One and a half or twice the, uh, the size of your, of your school. And you're, and then the enrollment that you have, but when it comes down to in the four hundred range, it becomes very, very difficult to. To stay within the space standards. Hence, you try to get a space standard waiver, so that you don't, not only. Uh, because then you're getting penalized because it, it impacts your reimbursement rate.
That's when the space waiver would come into play, or are we gonna, is that, is this time to talk about that, or? I don't.
So Rusty, the question is, is, is. This is where, why the space waiver is such an issue.
Yes.
And the conversation that I've had with the state, uh, and with the, the. Person they were working with at the time, to trying to get to sixty thousand square feet for a pre-K eight building. Is very hard to do, I mean, he's, he's got it down, just if you think about the QA and M column, and this is why the space waiver. Is so important, in my opinion. Is because if you look at what the spaces are for you to cut another ten thousand, uh, what was it, thirteen thousand, twelve thousand square feet?
Yep.
Not significant. There's a huge amount of space, um, and so. That's why the space waiver is so important, but I think that. The state understood that because it's going to a pre-K eight building. I think they'd be less agreeable if it was just an elementary school or, you know. Does that make sense, Rusty, you might?
Yeah, no, that's true, and actually, because we're, you know, they have different, uh. Uh, uh, levels of enrollment, so there's a. Area per square foot for, uh, student enrollments under three hundred and fifty. And then there's a category from three fifty to seven fifty, and then there's one above that. And what happens is, in each of those categories, that the area per student. Uh, is greater, uh, if it's a smaller, uh, in, in other words, if it's three fifty or less. You might get two or three square foot per student more, if your enrollment is three fifty or less, and then you get into a different category if you're. Uh, three fifty or more. Unfortunately, we, as a, as a pre-K eight fall into that. Four hundred, you know, three fifty plus category, so we lose. Some square footage based on the space standards, that it's not a significant amount. But, you know, the space standards are not really set up to be, uh, a guide for the educational program. They're just an arbitrary. Sort of a number that, and, and, you know, this has been discussed many times with, with people at the state. And there we'll say that, look, this is an arbitrary number that, that was put together to, to establish, uh, reimbursement. Uh, it does not mean that this is the number you should use for your educational program spaces.
So, so are, are we thinking that the difference between the sixty thousand and the seventy-two thousand might be the waiver?
Yes.
Waiver, okay.
Yes, absolutely. Now, we could look at the seventy-two and say, okay, do we, we have a pre-K. Uh, or flex classroom, and then we also have a five-eight flex classroom. Which are, which, which make perfect sense, because if you do have a bubble that comes through, how do you deal with that? Um, but, but then you also have an additional flex classroom. So maybe there's some discussion about, do we need to have that additional flex classroom? You also have the steam room, you know, steam classroom. Um. Do we look at, um. Uh, and, and say, how important is that to, to the overall program? Can we accomplish that by maybe making one of the science labs bigger and, and, you know, and. And as a result, that becomes a steam slash, uh, science lab. I'm just throwing out ideas, that's not, you know, I'm just saying, those are the types of. Um, uh, you know, maybe modifications that one would, could consider. In, in, uh, just reducing the square footage. Um, because ultimately, there's also a sort of what we call a gross-up factor, which is a percentage. Of what that, uh, the corridors and, and the walls, et cetera, would be. So for, it's not just a simple, oh, we've taken a thousand square feet out of the, of the classroom, it's thousand plus a percentage, plus maybe ten percent. So it's eleven hundred square feet, so every foot that you take out of the, the base program, you reduce the overall square footage of the building as well.
I just, I keep, I can't. Let go, so. Is, is our endeavor to get down to? I mean, some exercise in getting down to sixty thousand square feet because that is the, that is the space standard? Or are we talking about the seventy-two that is in front of us? That had some modifications, but seems more maybe amenable to, um. But I'm just trying to understand the, as opposed to just going with the Ed Specs that we had before. Um, there's now three, there's this small one, the space. That meets the space standards. There's this middle one, and then there's the one that, um, was the initial twenty-twenty-two number. Um. So I'm just having a hard time understanding the exercise and, and. Are we just trying to determine if this one is enough?
You are trying to ensure that. The Ed Specs square footage matches your programmatic need and your philosophy.
And remember that this, no. This one, the seventy-two, was already reduced by the group of core members. At least once, maybe twice, which was brought up by Michelle Duzek-Honey.
Right.
Two meetings past.
Yeah.
So even this one.
Ringing in my ears.
Is reduced off of what originally the group had wanted for the students. Which was the eighty-three, is that correct?
This one here, but I think there was discussion even before that, that was larger. Maybe that was our top, our biggest one. That might, this might be our ultimate.
The, uh, program space on the left, because I think we did it slightly differently, is eighty-seven thousand square feet, so what we are seeing. And, and part of it's a reflection of the gross-up factor, uh, and that we use on, on school projects. So we've gone down from eighty-seven, eight forty-nine to the seventy-two, three sixty-two. And that's the, the, the re, the net area, the gross is closer, you know, a little bit more than that. But ultimately, programmatically, I think the, the second column tries to maintain all your program spaces. Uh. Pairing it down slightly.
In, in an effort to reduce the cost. I mean. That's to meet this lease.
He's trying to bring it closer to the, to, to the number that we.
The state will be.
The state will look at us and say, you've already whittled it down, you're down to a number that, that matches the space waiver. If you're asking for a space waiver for twenty thousand square feet. They may say, no, we'll give you ten thousand, wiggle it down, that's why.
I didn't understand that part of it, that makes sense now.
Right, Rusty, I mean, I think that's the point of what you're trying to.
Specific number of.
Right.
Square feet adding on, got it.
And just as an example, Rusty, the, the seven fifty for a square foot or a classroom. Is that standard build now, is that what you're looking around?
That's pretty standard now, I mean, you know, we don't put as much cabinetry in some of the classrooms. Uh, in, when you look at your pre-K and K spaces that tend to be the larger spaces. Um, generally, we're in the twelve fifty range in terms of square footage. Uh, you're down, in, in this version, um, we brought it down to eleven forty-six. Which is, you know, because when you, when you look at that twelve fifty, it includes. The, the toilet room, the storage, the breakout room, so. It's, it's, it has many components to it, so you're not that far off of what, uh, a typical pre-K needs to be. Or K. And we have seen rooms that are even smaller than that, especially when you're working with exist, existing buildings.
Yeah, I also might be able to answer your question in a different manner, uh, and Rusty, I'd be interested in your take on this. Um, my review of his conversion. Um, is that he's really targeting the core academic section. And the reason why is, is, is because we built in like things like flex spaces and breakout spaces. If you were going to try and change the Ed Spec, that would honestly be, in my opinion. One of the only areas where you really could do it, and the reason why I say that. Is if you look at the second section down in the pink, the, uh, encore and special academics. I don't think you can change the size any further than what he has for choral music. Or the band room, or the instrument storage, uh, the art rooms. PE space, like, if you wanna have help, you need a classroom, right? If you want foreign language, you need a classroom, turn the page, and you just do the same thing, special education. I don't think you can change those spaces. Right, you may get a, a little square footage, but I think he's already stolen a little bit of best we can. I don't think you're gonna adjust those that much more. If you look at Assembly Community Use in green, the big change there is the auditorium. Right, and he added stage storage and AV equipment, but. You need a cafeteria, it's gonna be about this, that's, there's no, you, you can't change that, you're not gonna buy square footage here, if that makes sense, right? Same thing with a gym. The administrative services, I don't, those are office spaces, right, they're smaller spaces, I don't think you're gonna steal a bunch there. Health nurse on the third page, guidance office, and then the last section, Facility Management and Support. Are things that he's built in, you know, the electrical data rooms, mechanical rooms, I don't, you're not gonna be able to steal from there. So if you're going to look at this, I think from an approach to say, we wanna think about the Ed Spec again. To see if it matches our need. I think you're looking at that first section in Core Academic. And I think you're looking at really specific spaces, breakout spaces. And flex spaces. Everything else within that, you can't change a pre-K classroom, you need two, and you leave two. Right, you need the elementary, um, first, second, third, fourth group, you know, grade class, fifth, sixth, all the way through, you need those classrooms. Um, you need the science labs. So Rusty, that would be my approach, is that, is that something that you think? If they're gonna have a discussion to try and really think about, hey, is this a space we want? It would be really a discussion around breakout spaces and flex spaces.
That's correct, I mean, usually, we don't have, uh, you know, those are not built in, I mean, it's desirable, I think it's. Really good for educational programs, but if you're, if, if you have no choice, those are the areas that I would look at most.
Um, a couple of things, one, I don't know if this is a typo or if it was intentional, but under the technology education area. You have a thousand and a hundred and fifty square feet with zeros, I don't know if that was supposed to be a one next to that.
I know there, there isn't, I, I don't think it was in the original. Scope, and we didn't include it here.
It wasn't, I didn't know if you added it, cuz I had noticed that some areas actually got increases, whereas other areas got decreases. So I didn't know if that was an oversight or not, and then, um. I just wanted to make a comment too, that. I feel like. For us especially, and we've been talking about this as a group, is that our biggest hurdle is getting community buy-in for this project. And I think that it would be a disservice to not. Consider needs that have been vocalized, and I know Billy, you said need, but I don't wanna get so. Consumed in the weeds of, oh, we have to get down to sixty thousand, like, I understand that. You know, cost is relevant as well, but. Some things that I've heard a lot of people being concerned over is the pre-K, preschool. And having the ability to accept all children, not just lottery, um, looking at our. Population and demographics and stuff, I mean, twenty-five percent, I think now of our students have. Um, learning disabilities. And I think that being somebody who's a blue collar person out in the real world, I think bringing the shop. Area like a trade, you know what I mean, like a just tech, that type of thing, I think would be really beneficial to our students in our town. Um, I know we're right next to UConn, so I think people are just like, uh, some, assuming that they're gonna go to E O Smith, they're gonna go to UConn, they're gonna do whatever, but. I'm just looking at who's in our schools, you know what I mean, and. I haven't had time to find actually any statistical data, but just knowing. You know, people who are in that type of workforce, I think, uh, some type of technology shock would be really beneficial to those. Underserved kids who are good with working with their hands, not necessarily.
I think that was discussed way, way at the beginning when we were doing like the. If you could add anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not familiar with those, but I'm like, well, we have this opportunity to go over this again.
Yeah.
Let's look at the need, because we have to sell this.
Right.
So if, and I've had people tell me like, hey, you know, I feel like. You're not listening to what we want, and we, we have all these things that we're offering. You know what I mean, like, some people may be like, oh, well. Who cares, like, what's different done to schools now besides it's new, or it's, you know what I'm trying to say, so I'm just like, well, we're adding these different things that. Have been, you know, vocalized by a certain percentage of the population that they're looking for this. It might be easier to get a little bit more buy-in from the voters to be like, oh, hey, yeah, I want there to be shop for my kid. I wanna be able to send my kid to preschool here without having to go through a lottery system, I want X, Y, and Z, like, let's. Match people where they are versus, okay, the state's telling the sixty thousand, screw it, let's just cut everything, I don't think that that's fair, and I don't think that that's right.
Yeah, we're in a bit of a different position this time, now, because of the, you know, new, um. What is the word?
Reimbursement rate.
Thank you, reimbursement rate, so at the time, what happened was, you know, there was a list made of. If we could have anything and everything, and the shop was definitely on there now that I'm thinking about it, and there was like a. I don't know what they call it now. Sewing, cooking, home type, um, you know.
Family consumer science, yeah.
Yeah, so those things were all on the like wishlist.
Yeah.
And at the time, because of the reimbursement rate, it really didn't have to come down to numbers as much as possible.
Yeah.
So now that we've got a different perspective on that, you're totally right, it's a. Kind of flipped the whole situation, and maybe going back and looking at those things, especially in the way that you're framing it for. Folks who would really want those things in the schools, they'll find it beneficial to build or renovate. Or add, because those things would be added, you're totally right about that.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to say that we're trying to minimize it down to sixty thousand, I'm not saying that. And I'm also not saying, okay, hey, you know, free for all, let's just blow it up to a hundred thousand square feet.
Very good.
I'm just, I just wanted to verbalize like, hey. I wanted to talk about this and it felt like an opportunity to bring that up, and like I said, I didn't follow along the last time. On the last board, so I just wanted to take the opportunity to say that.
I can tell you where it is, and, and I think the discussion went to steam, that steam room is Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Math. And the discussion around that steam room was. Could you do a family consumer of science in there, could you do, uh, some sort of shop, something? It's not gonna be, I mean, I was just telling somebody the other day, my shop class in middle school in Tom was massive. I mean, it was, you know, you had everything, bandsaw, Sanders, you had everything. Um, now they do it through some sort of. It's, Rusty, do, do you know the name, is, is it called industrial arts still?
Yeah, it's still called, I mean, it's, they call it technology education, but it's really broken up into. Uh, woodshop and metals and so on, but it's more geared towards, uh, the trades. And, but in, in terms of a real life situation, like building, construction and. Um, you know, welding and metalwork, et cetera, but let me just say that. We're seeing less and less of that in middle schools, cuz that program, those programs get really enhanced at the high school level. So because of, you know, you know, we, what we're seeing is more technology-based at the middle school. So we don't have what used to be home economics or woodshop and things like that. We're seeing more of the technology base, and, and then when you go to the high school level. You have a lot, you know, all the, the technology ed, which includes what used to be called industrial arts.
And that's, so, so my point around the steam though, is that you could build that space very specifically.
Yes.
I'm just gonna just. I'm just gonna just really simplify it, say, picture this room with a bunch of cubicles. That's the plumbing cubicle, that's the electrical cubicle, that's the woodshop cubicle, like, you could build things that way. Um, it's not necessarily gonna be the typical industrial arts, but that's the shift of what. And when I think roughly says middle schools are doing, that's how they're doing it, they may on the same room have robots and three D printers.
Right.
Right? Beautiful shop in in Manchester.
I mean, I understand that, but also I'm gonna be. Um, hold on one second. Trying to. Think of how I wanna word it. There. I don't. I feel like since I've seen personally. A decline in. Um, access, accessibility, a lot of people don't even know that Wyndham Tech's an option. So if you're going to pawn it off at the high school level and use that as an excuse to take it away. For kids who might need sixth, seventh, eighth grade to decide where they wanna go.
Yeah.
And we've seen a decrease in funds going to. Uh, technical high schools, there's a huge skills gap right now in the trades. And it starts, our purpose and something that I'm a huge advocate for is. Why? We are here to help create. A future, we are here to help create productive citizens. For hopefully stay in our town and keep it, or just contribute to society, society in a beneficial way, so I don't really. I think that pawning it off like, oh, well, to me, when I think of steam, okay, science, technology. Engineering, math, it's, you know what I mean, like, I want more, it's not the same as a woodshop, not the same, and to give kids that. Availability to get out of academics and. Cut something with a band saw, like, so I just feel like our kids would benefit so much from that. So that they could be like, wow, I didn't even know Wyndham Tech was a choice, and I know Wyndham Tech comes in and does a spiel or whatever, but. You don't get it until you get your hands on some stuff, you know what I mean? And, um.
You've already seen it here.
I've seen, I'm living it right now, you cannot find anybody, and it takes years, you know what I mean, so it'd just be like, oh. Go to Wyndham Tech and you, you, okay, you have exploratory, so anyways, I'm passionate about it, obviously, but, um.
Well, that's a space that you could address. That steam space doesn't need to be, you could build it as something else, and when you're gonna do your expect, like, now's the time to do it.
Right.
And I think that's your point.
That's why I'm just harping on it, so I apologize, but I just think it's. So important, especially for, you know.
We're also in a unique situation where kids can choose which school to go.
Yeah.
So this will help guide them what they really wanna do.
Right, it it just gives them time, and usually kids don't even know about Wyndham Tech unless their parents went there, so it's like to give them that opportunity to be like, hey, you know. But I, that's just.
The other thing I'll check, just for, and I don't know, because I haven't looked. I don't know how many. Quote-unquote shop teachers there still are, I don't know if they're they're coming out of schools. And they can't fill them, it's like, you could build a space, but if you don't have a certified teacher, the state's gonna say.
I understand that, and I'm projecting my fantastical idea.
No, I love the kind of idea, but, I mean, honestly, I I would like more of our kids that, I mean. Changing oil on things, changing a tire, you know, I mean, some of that, it's non-technology based.
Right.
Right, you're, what does that opportunity look like? Um, Sam, the other set thing you said about pre K. Is it did go from, so we have one room now, and when both of these options did go to two. So it would be threes and fours, what I'll tell you is. If you build it, they will come. So you may go, hey, uh, we were, we feel good about two rooms, you may open up preschool. And need to charge because. There's a cost adding teacher, one, and if you keep it free, it's gonna fill up. And you're still gonna have a lottery, or you're gonna have to add another classroom. So it's things to think about, I I don't disagree with you, I I think that. Um. It's how you wanna frame that, if you're gonna add a second, keep the second space. Rusty, can you answer a question for me, when you look at your top core academic? If, uh, and you said if you had an extra section section. At any grade level through fourth grade, actually, it's really through eighth grade. I have to say through four though, because it's on that, you'd have to have it on that level. How many quote-unquote extra classroom sized spaces would you have? Do you see one?
Yeah, you know, the tough thing is your school is so small, uh, that I'd like to say one, but. You don't have the the luxury of. Uh, uh, you know, getting more students in a classroom, and it, because if it, if there's X number of kids per grade. Uh, and you've got a maximum size, then you have to go into the next grade. I I think one typically is pretty good, uh, two probably is better.
Is that what you have built in here, Rusty, is the flex on the bottom of the core academic section? An additional classroom to allow the flexibility so that if we have a third pre K section, I'm just giving an example. Or a third, fourth grade section, is that what that flex space is in your eyes?
In my, uh, I put it in there, uh, because. You already have one flex in the in the pre K through four, or I should say K through fours, um. And then you have one flex classroom. Um, five through eight. And and that additional flex classroom would give you even more capacity. Uh, or if if there's a bubble that's coming through. Um. If if there's one room that I would then suggest that you may consider repurposing for another, another program, that might be the the space.
So what is the flex in the red? That's, I guess that's what I'm getting at, because I see the one to four and the five to eight, the flex in red.
The the flex in red is the one, uh, that I I thought that. Uh, maybe if there's a program that, uh, because you have the other two rooms. Uh, that you may be able to eliminate that. I didn't eliminate it, but I I just. Have, you know, put it in red just to call attention.
And so the question is, what do we use for it?
Need, um, responding to, um, Sam's comment about pre K. I think at the very least, if we could put pre K at the end of a week, uh, end of a wing. With some buildable space around it. So when some grants come through in the future, where we have universal pre K, we could push that wing out and add to it. You know, looking forward, like you're saying, Sam, cuz this is where we're going at some point, um, I don't think. I'm also looking at the grant, the pre K, the early childhood grant, I know we're not specifically doing that. But taking a peek at that and seeing if that would help us in any way. Um. Yeah, cuz I agree with you a hundred percent, that I'd love to get a. A universal pre K model going.
Yeah.
Yes.
I have another kind of consumer request you wanted to comment on that.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, my question is, is. And I could be remembering wrong, but right now. We have three sections. For every grade except for fourth. Grabbers.
First and two.
And first, and first, first and fourth. Because that was a big debate last time. Cuz even John had mentioned, oh, well, because we were talking about third grade, right?
Yeah.
This is only showing two on everything, right?
It's based on your projections, yes. So class has an increase with this model. So you're basing your. Your ed spec on future projections. You're not basing your ed spec on what you have today.
Okay, how accurate are those projections? I mean.
They're educated guesses there, I mean. Which is why, like, when we're talking about two sections or two spaces, and I'm particularly asking right now about. Where's the extra classroom? Is it, and it's a flex space, that's the extra classroom, if you go to a third section. Because if you don't have the extra classroom and you get a bubble of forty-five, you're gonna have a class of twenty-two and twenty-three.
Hmm.
Right, that's what the flex space does for you, um, but the projections building this out. Was two classrooms. Per grade level, like that, on that lower level.
And are these classrooms larger than the classrooms we have now? Like, I know that obviously it's like a person to child to teacher ratio two is an issue for.
I can't, I have not, I don't grow up with classroom sizes right now, upstairs is different than downstairs too, depends on what they have for storage.
Might be interesting to measure, just to get a perspective.
I actually think these are smaller than an upper classroom.
Yeah. This one would be.
We're more efficient with space.
Kind of sardines and.
Right.
I I have another question too, um, I mean, this is gonna. We're anticipating that this project, whatever it is, is going to last us for a good many years after it's built or renovated. Um, I'm concerned about reducing the storage, um. That's like, I just wonder what the rationale was, because that's a lot, that's a pretty significant reduction. Um, going from, I'm just, I think, I'm just looking at one through four storage, four hundred going to one fifty. Um. I. I mean, there's a, I think there's a shortage of storage in every single school I've been in ever in my life, and. To build a new school, having that already be a concern, I I feel like is. Not good planning. But I don't, uh, maybe there's method behind the madness, I'm just curious.
So. In the academic spaces, it's it's purely a matter of, you know. Where the storage is, we try to, uh, include storage within the classroom and cabinets, et cetera. To make it more efficient. Um, so to have a separate storage room, I mean, we've done that in in other projects, but. When when there's adequate space, but that's usually the first place that everybody wants the space for the academic classrooms. I mean, that that's a, a number you could change and say, you know what, we would like to have more storage, and that's, that's fine. We were just trying to create a balance and looking at other, um, pre K five programs that we've done. In terms of, actually, there there are some spaces here that you have that are not in. Other pre K five program, but they all also tend to be larger, uh, with higher student. Enrollment, so they have the flexibility of greater square footage.
Not good at square footage, like, for example. Would anyone be willing to tell me the ballpark of the square feet of this room?
Countile.
I'm not counting. So you said ballpark. All right, you got three.
I'd say twenty by twenty. That'd be my guess.
Which is according to my. Or I was gonna say, you didn't let me say it. More. Okay, I'm gonna think about that.
Well, that's encouraging when you think of us seven hundred. Twenty-five classroom. I can't do, like, this is. That's huge, seven twenty-five, if this is four hundred.
Hey Rusty, I have a question for you.
Yep.
I'm looking at, uh, five through eight. And in the approved ed spec. That it shows ten middle school classrooms.
Yeah.
And I see. Eight. I'm not, ten does not incl- uh, include science labs. So it would be twelve with science labs. So the ten spaces for in in the Wellington approved ed spec. For five to eight. I'm looking at E L A and math for each grade level, which is eight. The way I'm looking at yours right now, I can't find if there's an additional two, which would be social studies. I'm I'm wondering about that.
Okay, no, we have only, we had eight in in the program, that might be something that. When we were looking at it, we were going. Two classes per grade, grade level all the way through, you know, but that's. That's one of the. Areas that you'd have to consider, because if the students are in. One room and, you know, you basically have an empty, empty room in that, in that case.
So. This is a consideration for you, and this is where I say. You go into one building, a big consideration would be to change your middle school model. And what that looks like is operating. Within one building, a pre K six building. And a seventh and eighth grade building. The reason I I share that is because certifications go through sixth grade. Currently, you hit the middle school. And you have an E L A teacher at one group, at a fifth, I'm gonna get fifth grade, right, E L A math. And you have a a split science, social studies person, they do both, right, so there's three sections. You could consider. If you go to one school, going down to having same model that you use the elementary level. Where one teacher teaches all content. Through sixth grade, which means. You need two sections of fifth and two sections of sixth. As opposed to. The additional science and social studies person through sixth grade, if that makes sense. It's two additional people, cuz you have to a loss of one. And then seventh, eighth, you have a math teacher and a and an E L A teacher. And then you have rooms, and then you have the science labs. You do need a social studies teacher at that seventh to eighth, because the cert is seven twelve. So that's where you start to consider, like, hey, do we change, it would change your schedule, obviously, um. But that's the time you consider those things, and that impacts the rooms you need. I don't know if that was clear, but.
And then they're also subject to the bubble, the fifth and sixth grade, so it could be two or three. If they're self-contained.
Oh, okay, sure, yeah, they're subject to the bubble. You, you're. You would want to make sure, just like you did for, and I think they have in there, he has in there a five-eight flex room. Right, he's got one five-eight flex room, that would be your. Uh-oh, we have three sections of fifth grade, cuz it's a really large class, and then you slide them into that.
I just wanted to take a minute, Gloria, I see you there with your hand up, do you mind waiting until, um, the end of this part? Thank you.
I'm still concerned about. Lack of platform space where we have. Right now. Even if you have pre K, we have one.
You can't compare it though, to what you have today.
Yeah.
The state's not gonna look at that.
But I'm.
Unless your bubble is massive, and unless your school, like, your projection's old. And the state, you showed the state, like, look at their projection was, uh, uh, Hebrews Living, that's I think. Um, the projections, four hundred students in your school and we're at five fifty. Right, they were saying that. You would have evidence to show we've grown, you could, you could go off that, you probably would wanna have your. Your Roman projection redone, but they're gonna base it on the projection.
And what is this, what number is this based on? Number of students.
You're looking in the four hundred range districts.
It's like four hundred, the four two thirty.
Yeah, and and in the the projection, the last, one, two, three, four, five. Five years from twenty-seven to thirty-two. They're all four oh five, four oh three, four oh seven, that's what was in the projection, I'm not saying that's today.
But we're at three thirty-seven, seven, approximately today. And we have three of three grades, and we probably really should have a third, fourth grade, I mean, if we were. Being true to our philosophy. Um, but we don't have the space to do that, and four hundred thirteen is bigger than three thirty-seven. In terms of number of students.
We would have to do another. Projection, right?
Which I've reached out, both and both enrollment projections are are like November, December at this point in time.
How long are they, do they last, like? This, uh.
Well, see, what, when they, when you present your enrollment projection to the state, what's, how, how?
It's an eight-year window, so you have to go eight years from the time of your application.
But can it be two years old when you present it, or or? What are they looking for?
If the, if the trend is going higher, you're better off doing a new one. Um, just looking at the current enrollment projection that we have. You know, your. Four eleven is the highest. Uh, in twenty-six, twenty-seven, which is when we would be. Four eleven is the highest uh in twenty-six, twenty-seven, which is when we would be looking at applying. And then it starts declining from that point on. So. You have, they'll look at that eight-year window and pick the high, you can pick the highest uh year of enrollment.
What, Rusty, what is the lowest number that a projection? Goes to, you said it declines after twenty-six.
It goes on, but not a lot, it's four, there's uh four oh five, four hundred, four oh three. So the the difference is fairly small.
Look at the projection to the reality now, you're off by at least thirty or forty kids in in the downward trend, so.
The next projection could be three fifty, three forty, three thirty, three twenty.
That's grand, well, I mean, conceivably, there's an extra classroom, yeah, extra, there's an extra classroom. Um. For. Well, it's only for grades, so there's, which two, but three, the one, three extra classrooms, basically.
For all grades.
Right.
Yes, and remember that when you, depending on your layout, it's not really for all grades.
Right.
So that's why there's one classroom for one year, uh, what I'll say is.
It's like through four.
Yeah, through fourth grade, because if you need it at first grade and that it's already used, and your space upstairs. You're insane.
Send them upstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern at this point.
Yeah, it's it's a balance you're gonna have to strike, because if the projections are high, which they are now. And the actual enrollment's low, and we, you try to move forward, building a school with. Five extra flex classrooms, which is gonna add. Four thousand square feet, that's gonna raise the number, and that doesn't get reimbursed, if all this raises cost. That's, that's the one thing we have to remember, is this has to get passed. And uh, you know, there's a danger in saying, we, for example, I'm not saying they're saying this, but for example, we need an extra. We need to have an extra flex class for like every other grade kind of thing, so we need at least four extra flex classes, okay, that's a fantastic idea. What is that gonna do to raise the cost, and is that gonna affect anybody deciding whether or not we do this? Maybe it's such a fine line to walk.
Maybe it's a really, I know it's a really good question to put to the public, because it calms down the class size. And we know that there's um passionate conversations about that right now, so asking our families may be the best way to.
Basically, everything we're going to.
And talk less about flex spaces and talk more about adding an actual classroom, and you're right, dollar, 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 which is why it looks like this right now. But, and you said, I think that's, that's what people have to understand when they come to us with their thoughts, feelings, ideas, so.
And you may get less support from the state on space waiver. Or they may say, we'll give you eight thousand, but you were hoping for fourteen. That additional six thousand square feet penalizes you on your percentage.
Well, I think that's also part of of selling the vision. And that's what I'm talking about, is direct getting buy-in, and I know it's, it's easy to get so caught up on this, this and that, but I think if we explain why. We already got a lot of backlash last week for potentially cutting thirds down to two. I personally did, and I know a couple other people did too, so imagine every grade level now is going down to. I think if we come out, that's what I'm talking more about. Meeting the needs of the town and explaining, hey, you know, and I know that we only have so much time and everybody's got an opinion, it's just like, you know, what body part. But, um. I just think that that's so important, and I don't want to miss that key component of this potential new project. Is just meeting the town's needs, and I think that that's the only way we're gonna get people out voting. Having the information, knowing what they're voting on, I hate to to push this, and then people have an idea, like, oh, yeah, it's gonna be this and that, it's like, oh, what the heck, like, now. Two classes, that, I didn't know that, you know what I mean, like, and I think that there's certain things, like. Uh, you had said that are really important to. The vision of what, what type of culture we want to have in our schools, based on who we have in town, and I think that that's a big one, we've heard time and time again. And I'm not saying. Anything, either way, I'm just saying that I feel like we need to. Make our school for us and what our people want, you know what I mean, that's from being a vet horse, but.
No, and you're just bringing up the point again, in my mind, about the necessity for very. Clear information.
Right.
That is accurate, and we are all on the same page and understanding. All of these conversations and these, well, if we do this, then we're gonna have to do that, um, because then when we are. Talking about it here, and people are watching, or presenting it, you know, as we will next week, um, people get that. Like, what do you mean two classes per grade? Well, you can add another class per every grade if you want to, here's the square footage we're adding, here's how much it's gonna cost more. What do you want to do about that?
And I also understand there are those points, like, well, all this is for nothing, if if seventy-five percent of the population who's not paying attention to what we're saying. Or the voters, rather, not bit, not watching our videos, not doing this and that, they come out and hurts, cuz they're like, oh, our taxes are going up, oh, no, 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 yeah, I I know that. It's a fine line back and forth, but. The only way to make change is to get people passionate about it and outspreading the word, and you plant a seed today for someone to sit in the shade twenty years from now. And I think we really need to, you know, get people building what we, what they want, so they can stand behind it and advocate for it.
I love your.
And it can't just be us, it has to be, we're representing our population, and that's how you get word of mouth, is the best advertisement you could ever get. For anything in your life.
Mm-hmm.
And I, that's all. But yeah, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place, cuz it's like, oh, shoot, you know what I mean, we we, you know, people come out and they're like, no, I don't know, so.
What's the process to get? The space waiver, like, do we hire someone to negotiate?
No, you, you take your ed spec to them, you you walk through with them. I mean, eh, we've done that before, we've walked through the the ed spec with the with the state. And shown them what the program was, and shown them, when when Rusty said, it's like an exercise, like to show the square footage, it was baffling. And they understood it, they're like, it doesn't make sense for a pre-K eight building, it doesn't, especially for a small district, so. You, you have to, like, I think I already said, like, every other grade, if you added that in, they're gonna look at that and go. We're not gonna give you the money for every other grade to have a, an open classroom, that doesn't make sense, we're not doing that. We may give you one for one for four grades, but that's, you have to have those conversations with them to be able to get.
So when does that take, like, is that something that we would do soon, just that we have that information, that we understand what we're getting, like? Can I have to enter the project, is that what Tammy said, like, right, yeah, that's what I thought.
That's further along in the process.
She spoke on the space waiver situation, she's working on that as well, and making sure people understand that, like. The formula does not make sense a lot of the times, and you know she represents a lot of small towns, and that's something that she's. Speaking on, I think, frequently, and I remember her saying we needed a, like, a project before taking it to talk about the. Space waiver.
A project voted upon by the town, how far along was that project?
I think. We would be, like, offering up.
I mean.
The project needs to be submitted, and I think.
Rusty lives this guys.
Yeah, or we can ask her next week, too.
Rusty, what, what is the ed spec conversation and space with waiver conversation in your experience?
You can have it at any time, and and when you're submitting your ed spec, you can have that discussion with them. Uh, you know, they're pretty open to meeting with you, so there's two ways you can address the space standards. One is to get the commissioner to agree that it's warranted, uh, and and gets, get it that way. Or the second one is through special legislation or notwithstanding legislation. This pass bill where you were approved for the additional fifteen percent, if you go through that, there's many, many districts that were granted a space standard waiver. For their school projects, so you have, in some ways, you have two bites of the apple, if you don't get off what you want. You could then go back to legislative route.
Better off taking the eighty-seven thousand square feet to them, letting them, letting them tell us no on the space. And then cutting things, or we shouldn't be cutting before?
On on a new school, it's, it's hard, I mean, you have to justify programmatically, so what they look for. Is, is, you know, is an explanation on why it's, it, the additional square footage is necessary, so if you say, look. Programatically, we need this for a small district, they understand that, and we just have to make a case. Uh, on it, uh, if we're doing a new school, they're, they'll push back a little bit more on the new school, um. But because on, and on existing building, you're, you know, you're dealing with some of the existing spaces, so there's a lot more latitude there. But that's not to say that you're gonna get it on a new school.
Do you know our per combined square footage balance is with?
Yeah, we're in the nineties. Ninety-three thousand, Rusty? I think it's sixty.
Sixty and and thirty-something, closer to a hundred.
Right.
Yeah. I also think that what you just asked about depends on which project you did. Because if you, uh, I must chime in on this, please, if I'm wrong, if you were gonna renovate whole school. You would have more square footage, because the building is already. Pretty well established, right, you guys, you can change some things, but you can't change it all, cuz it's established. If you were gonna go new, you have a lot more flexibility on your square footage, and they might go, you can't do that, because you're not. It's, your building's new, right, Rusty, is that accurate?
Yeah.
And so on an existing building, you have, and and you have, there's two categories, there's one. Because you have a building that's pre nineteen fifty-nine, that portion of the building, you get a twenty percent boost on square footage. So, that's why when we were looking at the renovators new, we were using a higher number for the allowable square footage. I think it's about eight or nine thousand additional, so on a, on a renovator's new existing building model, you're closer to the seventy thousand square feet. Of allowable square footage. Um, and so that's, that's how it it works on renovations of existing buildings.
But, right now, um, when we look at our proposed plan for the renovation, it has these ed specs in it. The, this number of classrooms and.
The first call.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question or comment, though, when Tammy was here. Did she say that when she had? I don't know if I'm remembering correctly or not, when she tried to advocate for that, um, legislature for us, legislation for us. The last. Um, presentation that he had made for us. The numbers were based on the state standard, square footage, correct?
That's right.
So when, cuz I remember Tammy saying, oh. I, did she show them those projects as like examples, and then that's when she told us, oh, just cut it down to. Two plus a no. So, my, do you understand where I'm going with this? What I'm saying is, if Tammy presented. The projects that he had given us in that packet, the new school, new site, hall renovation. Whatever the, the square footage is he was using was the state standard, which was sixty thousand, not, it wasn't. Okay, it's like you just said, yes.
In presentation, it was first one, yeah.
Are you talking about the fir- the last time we met with the state?
Talking about what Tammy.
What Rusty gave us.
Yes.
Was to the back.
Rusty gave us. Yeah. Those numbers, so my, my question is, because Tammy was very persistent about being like, don't go higher than this number.
Don't go higher than new building, new site, basically.
Right, but that cost was based on the sixty thousand square feet. Because that was the state standard.
Right.
So.
You know. Rusty did that work after we presented that.
Okay, so she didn't go and show them, hey, you guys might be looking at.
She showed him last, the last go around.
Okay, you know what I'm trying to ask, though, cuz I'm like, oh, shoot, are we shooting herself in the foot now, because we're adding twenty thousand square feet, and the state has in their mind. That we're coming in with sixty?
No.
Okay, I was like, oh, wait a minute. All right, never mind.
Rusty's markup are new, they have not seen that unless Tammy shared that with them, but the meeting Tammy was talking about with DAS and myself. It was the old number. From two years ago, or whatever it was, cost or renovation costs for new in that, the full square footage.
With these higher ed specs.
Okay, yeah, that was my question, I didn't know, they, who knows what they remember or not, but you know what I mean, if they're like, oh. I don't, you know. Yeah, dark board.
So, I I hear three things, and I just, I think it's important to figure this out, one is. If you want more information, and I just look, tech ed is a shortage area. And tech ed is, I think, what you're referring to for space, all right, so, um. I think you wanna make sure if you're gonna do something, you can fill it. Um, if it's a shortage area, I don't know if I can get to state numbers, I'm assuming I can, on the number of people who are certified in tech ed and state. Like, i- is it like fifty now, or is it a thousand, I have no idea what that number is. Um, so that would be, one is to do some research on that, bring that to you, two would be to. Um, look at what you have in flex spaces and breakout spaces, and determine if you want to adjust that. The breakout space is just a space outside of the classroom to do some small group instruction. Um, if that's not as important to this board, you can adjust that, right?
Do you think they would use it?
Yes. Yeah.
Do you consider breakout spaces like benches in the hallway?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
But it's built into it, it's built into your square footage.
So that, that would be counted in square footage if there was a bench in an already existing hallway?
So, you have to make code for hallway width and to make that breakout space meet code.
You'd have to make that way.
You got, you got it.
A lot of times, certainly, the best of people.
Yeah.
If you were walk center school, or or hall school, there are kids working in the hallway a lot.
Yeah.
Now, I.
Cool, and let me just say one more thing, sorry, the last thing that I think you you need to do, and I think Jim Marshall's been saying this over and over and over. Um, since the beginning, is your point, public feedback, you could, without approving an ed spec. You could say, hey, these are our conversations, we're thinking about taking out breakout spaces to ensure that we have extra classroom if we had a bubble. We could make the adjustment, you could, um, say, we, what are your thoughts on adding a tech ed space? Instead of a steam classroom that is less defined at this point in time, if we wanted to define their needs, and this is what Jim is really targeting, I think, is. Getting feedback on what the community would support. If there's a lot of people that would support, hey, we wanna see some sort of tech ed space. Or, I mean, there's people that love automotive spaces too, you you might get some, some, you know, or ag, like, there. Those are feeder programs at the E O Smith, right, and 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 uh Wyndham Tech, they're both feeder programs. Could you do something on a smaller scale for an introduction? To some of those things and have a curriculum to address those things, I would love to have seen my kids go through that. It's kinda like at the high school, they added a financial, what's your? Financial literacy class, fantastic, right, every kid has to go through it. You could do a similar thing, instead of just Wyndham Tech coming in and saying, here's our one-hour presentation on things we offer, and it's the first time you're thinking about it. Unless those families have thought about it in the past. It's really new information, it's hard to make the decision, as opposed to, if you want to expose kids to some of the things that do exist at EO. Do exist at Wyndham Tech, and kinda just open the door a little bit, or different things, help them make the decision you could, you could consider that. So sorry, Anne, that was, I just wanna say that, like, those are things that, getting feedback on from the community, you could. Without going overboard, make some general statements from this document, and say, we're considering doing X, Y, and Z. What are your thoughts on that, and get some of that, like, here's what we believe is needed, what do you think about that?
My historic difficulty with getting public feedback, I wonder how there's.
Like, how would you do that, like a, uh?
What do you mean, Sam's pumping everybody up?
Arthur's right.
Put dollars behind it, you'll get public feedback. We, if we, you have comparisons that say we would like to have. X, Y, and Z flex classes, there is no mobile, here's what that would cost. We wanna have a space for maybe two spaces for different kinds of shop. Can we add that? Here's what that's gonna cost. Potentially, here's what this is gonna cost. If we remove this, here's what that's gonna cost. If you put money behind anything, you will get feedback.
Yeah, but I think we would need a. Segway even to this conversation because there's so many people. Who. Don't even realize that we're having this conversation. They're like, oh, we already voted that down. What are they talking about? You know what I mean? And it's not. Any fault of our own, but it's like, how do we meet these people and be like, hey, the, you know?
That's something I wanted to bring up when you talk about getting engagement and. I hate to say it, but we have to get engagement for people who are not parents. Because parents in this town. I'm I'm one of them. I would vote for a fantastic brand new school of everything, but. As far as the voting block goes, it's not very big. So we have, like you said, Planetree for tomorrow, we have to talk to the people who don't have a vested interest in this anymore. And see what they would support for the future of the town. Right? Because there are gonna be a much bigger block of those votes. And. Transfer station. I mean, it's the, it's the only hub this town has, really, like, nobody's in the green. There there are no downtown in here. It's really the transfer station.
Will we be able to pull something together for like, um, I don't know, like a survey or something uh at the meeting that we're having? With Tammy, that's gonna be a big crowd, I feel like. Yeah.
I don't know what it would say at this point in time.
I know, because we don't have dollars. It's hard at this point. We don't have, like. If this happens, and this happens.
And it's not just dollars, like building dollars. If you add a tech ed space. You need to add a hundred and ten thousand dollars to your budget. Quickly. Right? You change your your H for teacher, your HVAC and ventilation for a space like that changes. Right? If you were going to, depending on what you're gonna do, like, if you're talking about a spray booth, right, those, that changes. Right? Add a ventilation hood to a science classroom. That changes. Like costs, so there's things that you can think about, but again. You can, you can get some of that feedback and, you know, people, if you just said, I'd love to see X in the one of the public schools. You know? You could say, okay, that's nice. Here's the dollars. This is what it costs.
We should have been at meet and greet with a tent today.
That's actually not a bad idea.
What we should have done. Yes.
Yeah.
That's why whenever um. Events are advertised through the PTA, there's other stuff going on at the schools. I often ask if it's open to the public because I think that. Folks should know that, and if you wanna have a lovely night of music, go to the concert. And see what those kids are doing because it will blow your mind. And you will understand what our community is growing and building for everyone's future. So that's why I ask that question every single time.
Rusty, you see?
You know, reaching out to like the senior center or wherever other locations, we could, like, we're happy to have a show, come on and down, like the.
I I did at the senior center. I I went there a couple times. I don't know if it's, if it's feedback, it's getting information.
Yeah.
Rusty, is anybody doing this well? Is anybody getting, you know. Feedback from communities? What does it look like? Are they hiring firms or what are small towns doing?
Yeah, some towns are hiring firms, um but there those projects are massive when they're hiring. Some PR firms to to do and and survey, do surveys. Um, you know, most of the time at the smaller districts, we just try to. Schedule multiple meetings with the community. To get the word out and to. You know, discuss it.
It's the Tenset Open House Curriculum Night. It's the Tenset, the Trunk or Tree, it's the, I mean, it's the transfer station. You have to make a commitment to it. You just don't know how broad your stroke is gonna be. You could do the survey. Again, you do all of those things and just put them all together and see.
Yeah.
I just don't know, is October. November, pretty late to be doing that. I don't, I don't know. Well, it depends on if you do the SBC now or you're still making decisions. Like what you, you as a board have to figure out what you wanna. You know, for direction, what you wanna do.
I I have another question, going back to the arts and the music. Um from what I'm seeing, we have one music room and one art room. Schedule wise, does that work?
Yeah.
Or the projection for composers.
Yeah. Oh, there are two now. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I see that. That's good. And then for music, is there time for every? Class child to get into the choral musical through music?
Because there's a band orchestra room also.
You'd use that space for regular music? Okay. Uh.
Do you be rebuilding schedules, just so you know, to be clear? You would be rebuilding a one building schedule. So maximize that.
Sometimes, but, okay, very great. The other thing, can you tell me what the stage? Looks like, um. Let's say we're having one of our assemblies. Let's say we're having a musical. What would that look like in this, the room with the stage? Where would that stay again with us? Um. Assembly in community. That look like, would, would people be sitting and?
Nope, you're good. Oh, no, you're good.
We'll explain.
Yeah. Nothing, nothing, you're good. Nothing to do with you.
I'm not getting done, but anyway, anyway, what would, could someone tell me what that would look like?
Rusty, is that, where is that on here? Is the auditorium going from eight thousand to one thousand? Is that where one thousand square foot stage?
What we were uh anticipating in this scenario is we don't have an auditorium. We either have a cafeteria. Or a gymnasium, um. And, you know, the size of the the cafeteria, we would look at the. The capacity on that, but the stage. There's about um. I think a thousand square. Look, my. It's a thousand square feet plus storage. Uh. Space for the stage as well.
So we'd set chairs in the cafeteria or. Gymnasium.
Just like you do now.
Okay, we might consider what Tomlin did in combining all three spaces. The cafeteria.
And on your layout, yep.
Yeah, okay.
And remember, that was straight elementary, so it might be easier to do that because they're.
Yeah, cafeteria, uh cafeterias are are. Something that you should. Shy away from if you can, because again, there's the gym component and the cafeteria component. Uh and so the, from the health perspective, you've got food. And and then you've got the gym occurring and and just scheduling with a gym or cafeteria. Is very difficult. That's why you'd either wanna go a cafeteria or a gymnasium.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of caf. Like a lot of the Glastonbury schools have a Ashford has a cafeteria.
And the reason for that is that if you put it uh make a stage at the gym. Number one, you know, there's a lot of activity going on in the gym, balls are being thrown, etc. So. The the surfaces in the gym are very hard and that's what they're supposed to be. Um, and so when you look at that from an acoustical perspective and you're gonna have any kind of a performance. The sound is very difficult to control. Whereas in a cafeteria, you can really control the sound with the design of the space. So that's why you see more cafeterias.
Okay, thank you. The walls are spinning.
Okay, look into um the tech ed situation. Especially staffing. That was something you said, right?
I just wanna. Well, well, we're gonna speak if we're talking about projections too, like, so it might be a shortage area now, but I think there's a big push, honestly, nationwide for more. For more uh tech needs jobs and 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 be able to go into that direction. So I think that maybe. Because this is gonna be built or completed for a couple of years, it might swing in the other direction. You might see that. May have a bigger pool to pull from by then. Suppression.
Yes. My. My dream, Arthur, to be honest with you, is. Not worry about the certification portion of it. If if they had a general classroom certification. And then I'm gonna bring in the HVAC person. To co-teach with me from the community to do, it's hard to 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 make sure you get it. But like, you know, you make connections with France Motors because they're right there, right? You've got a mechanic, okay, so now we have connections with. HVAC, and now we've got connections with Find the Local Electrician, like. That to me would be great because you could get professionals in the business. They might end up. Hiring those folks or, you know, long in the end, but. Um and then you're less focused on certification, but I agree with you, you know, there's more. Flexibility now in the state certification because of the fewer teachers coming out, that you can do some things that you couldn't do otherwise.
But for now, we could look at the steam room more flexibly, flexibly, flexible.
And a more flexible one. And I know this is totally not the same, but do you know, Phil, if we have any current clubs at all that are similar? Like, I am certain that if there are students with an interest. Um Steve. Probably does take them out to the lawnmower and work with them. Um if it's best for the student's program and so on, but do you know if we have anything?
No, I mean, my, I have on my whiteboard in my office, I've had this since I walked in the door. I've had the dream to run a tiny club, a tiny house club. Um to get someone to just throw a trailer in the parking lot and build it from the ground up with kids.
Yeah.
Um you have to have the right. People to do that, um with the right knowledge. You have to have a tech head teacher, or you have to have a local professional with a teacher that has some ability, experience, and wants to do that. I think we have kids that would would love those things.
Well, starting small, they could tinker with things and.
It happens now naturally through uh just, you know. Whatever means we do, you know, and both our maintenance custodians do those things.
Yeah.
And Steve both do it.
Mr. Samarakis did that.
He did some stuff like that, yeah.
Have like engines on the tables and.
Yeah.
Um. For his students, I think, yeah, so.
Okay, are we ready for some homework questions and that's good.
Nice, one more question. Is the gym all set? We have one gym and all those kids to, um like you say, is it divided and patterned? You'd have a curve.
The divider, you have divider.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um Lori, we are ready for your question. And if anyone else has a question, I promise you can go ahead and raise your hand. We'll get to it.
Can you, um, sorry, Lori, can you hold on one second?
Sure.
Can you just, uh, sorry, can you mute us for just one second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Just a technical issue. Thank you.
Okay, um. A couple of things after listening to the conversation about. Um, I'm a little unclear if you're talking about a new build or renovation, or you're not really getting that specific at this point. That's just a minor question I have. Um.
Yeah, we're not specific.
Okay, all right. Um, the, about the technology and wood shop, I was on the Board of Ed. When um our technology person retired and we could not find someone. It didn't help that he retired last minute. But we spent a lot of time, we had lots of input, we had lots of. People who came to board meetings because they did not want the technology to go away. But we literally could not find anyone to fill that position. And that was the point where we determined to change that position into more. Um. You know, like computers and maybe some Lego, you know, building. I mean, just because you you needed to have somebody certified to run all that equipment. Um. And I I think your idea, Phil, of of. You know, having a combination, a space that you really can do a lot. I know in Mansfield, because I sub at the elementary school there. Um. They have a maker's space and I have subbed in that room. And they do a lot of Lego activities, but I I think you could have. I mean, I like the idea of bringing in people from out of town and and, you know, some of those other. The other things. Um the other thing I think is really important as you're getting into this, and I'm sure you're well aware of it, is. Communication. I think one of the mistakes that we made. Two years ago, um. Was that we didn't address some of the things the community was really concerned with. For example, what's gonna happen to the old buildings? And even though that's not directly related to. A renovation or a new school, it is because if. For example, center school becomes the town office building, I'm just throwing that out there. There may be costs involved with that, and the public would wanna know what that involves. And of course, a lot of people were upset about. Hall school, just. Nothing happening with hall school, but. Um. We also don't own the building, so, you know, it, that's kind of frustrating for me to say, let's renovate hall school when. We don't technically own the building, um. You know, so I just think, and I don't know how you solve this because we've all had trouble with communication and. Getting information out to people and you do all these meetings, you have all this stuff, and then all of a sudden, people, well, I didn't know that was happening. You know, so, anyway, just, just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Um, Mr. Julius. Ralph, you there?
Oh, I am. I'm sorry. I didn't understand you.
No problem.
Couple of questions and a couple of comments.
Yeah.
Since shop was eliminated from HMS. How has the enrollment at Wyndham Tech? Uh changed over the years since? Uh I I think taking a look at that is important as you consider whether or not to add shop space. Uh if you're having trouble finding teachers, I would reach out to Mike Rowe because I'm sure he could find one for us. Uh he's a strong advocate. Of exposing kids to working with their hands beginning before eighth grade. Uh I. I am a Wyndham Tech grad. I went on to get my bachelor's in civil engineering. And I've done very well with that as a high school education. Uh the other thing. I would like to see happen is an update of the enrollment. Projections. I think that uh. Things have changed. And I don't see a large population increasing the near or. Not so near future in Wellington. There are only so many houses and. The reality is people are not having large families. And lastly, as far as hall school is concerned. Ownership, I don't feel is going to be an issue. I I think that uh this is just my opinion. Um. Changing the deed on that property would not take a tremendous amount of effort if. We had an honest conversation with the Hall Foundation. And that's it for my comments at this point.
Thank you. I, um, okay, looks like we don't have anybody else at this time and, uh, okay, so we'll close that portion. Thank you. What's that? Oh, sorry.
You too.
Mike, you just rolled it out at the last second?
There's two people.
Are you there? No, yes. Mr. Mahu?
Okay, it was, it was saying that the host would not allow unmuting. So now it has. Okay. Um, are we doing President to Speak? Are we just discussing what was previously presented?
This is not official President to Speak. It's just discussion of the conversation.
Okay, I will wait till President to Speak. Thank you.
Well, okay, thank you so much. Let's go. All right. Thank you, everyone. We will have President to Speak at the end of the meeting. Um. Okay, so where are we?
So I think, is there any task that you want Rusty to? Do at this point, or do you need to sit as a board again? Um and to gather feedback. I mean, I can do a snapshot of what I heard tonight and. Start developing some, some ideas for. Feedback from people and. Um.
I am looking forward to sitting in the meeting next week because I'm hoping we'll have a big turnout and I really wanna hear what. People have to say and their questions and their comments are certainly gonna guide us, so. Um, while I'm kind of digesting. All of this, that's like the next piece of information that I'm looking forward to, that's me. Um, what do we need Rusty to do?
If I took the ed spec as is and we did another meeting. After the September fourth meeting and just did another ed, I would slow down what I did tonight, obviously. Um, just walk through to get with the purpose of, it would be a board meeting to get feedback on ed specs. Alone, cause tonight you were just trying to like get wrap your head around it. You know, people are, are able to provide feedback and say, hey, I'd really love to see X, Y, and Z. Um, because this, you know, is already out there, you've already talked about things. That would be, could be a easy next step.
And I'd also like somehow. To have more information on. The space waiver situation, like if that's even possible, I don't know if we can like. Probe to find out how minimal they are to, like I just. It seems like it's such a moving target, it's hard to even have a conversation about it. And, um. I'm sure you'll talk to Tammy before next week, can you just ask her to make sure to speak on that when we were to fall together? Again, I mean, she probably is planning to anyway, but. What was your specific question? You wanna, you wanna know?
Well, like I'm imagining if, if, if we can go talk to them anytime, then I feel like, why don't we talk to them now? Like, this is what we're imagining and what is the reality of this ever happening? Um, because if we go through this whole exercise and then they say no, then we're back to not square one, but maybe square five. And, um.
You should pay for it.
Well, I mean, that's the question though, too. We have this high reimbursement rate, is this the time where if we're looking to the future, these are the things that we want in our school? You know, to Stan's point, these are the things that we might be able to get. Into our school at a, at a much lower cost than we would typically be able to do that, to do.
My instinctual feeling, if I may, is that Tammy already advocated for getting this a concrete number for that. I feel like to probe, like, are you guys gonna give us more? That's the feeling that I'm getting from asking. About the space waiver, like she had said that, and I don't know how anyone else feels, maybe that's just me. Feeling weird about asking, I keep going back and as, well, what if we do that? You know what I mean? It's like, okay, they told us that they gave us this guarantee. Seventy-nine percent. We know that we're probably gonna have to go to a space waiver, we know that Tammy's in charge of arbitrations, like it almost felt like she was like, okay, just like, let's try. Try to lighten the. I don't know if anyone else got that feeling, but, cause you can't really. The space waiver is based on, we don't know what the square footage is yet, so I feel like we're trying to. Solidify all these abstract numbers that we don't really know, you know what I mean? Like, I understand that you're trying to be like, okay, well, this, but we, we still don't really know because. We don't even know what project we're gonna go with yet, and that was, not to piggyback on your question, but, and I can wait, but it's like, I wanted to ask. When are we gonna do that? See what the appetite of the town is, is do we want a new school, new build? Do we want a renovate to new at Hall, or do we want no? When are we doing that? And that kind of, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse on some aspects, then we have to. Designate the new school building committee if we do, you know what I mean? Like, I feel like there's so much difference procedural things to do that. The space waiver is. Not at this time to worry about, but I don't know.
Well, we have the numbers in front of us, though, we have a, we have a big number and then we have a less number. And that implies automatically a space waiver because our square footage is approved for sixty thousand something, something. So like the space waiver. Exists in our mind at this point because we're already going over the amount that's spaced whatever.
Approved. And Rusty said that it's not uncommon for schools of our size and our population. We're proba- we're pretty much have to do a space waiver because we can't change gym, we can't change cafeteria, there's certain fixed spaces that. Our square footage per pupil is kind of out of our control because of the size of our. Kids, so it's kind of like a given that we are probably gonna have to apply for a space waiver, it's just in what excess of that sixty K.
Right, so that's, I mean, I guess that's what I, that's what my little question was, like, what, at what point do we get to have a conversation about that? Because that informs our conversation about what. Classrooms we have and what spaces we have, what tech and spaces.
Get it. We've already done that, we've had that conversation with them, I think they said they understand it, I don't think that's changed. The question will be. They're not gonna put writing for you until you put their project forward and you start to do the process. But Rusty's point is sharing ahead of time, it's just to make sure that they know this is what you're thinking about going in. And the question is gonna be, do you have an ed spec? And your answer should have to be yes, and. Does your ed spec align with the project that you have? And you might have to give something up, right? Your ed spec has an auditorium in it, but you might not get an auditorium. So as long as the project that you're doing, and this is, I think goes back to Lori's question, is it new or is it rental? Your ed spec should, is a reflection of the programs and spaces that you are looking for to achieve. You might not get everything you want, but the state is gonna wanna see you come as close as you can within reason. But they won't tell you or put it in writing ahead of time to say, you're gonna get a space waiver, they won't do that. What they will say is, and which is what they've already done, is, is said, we understand, like. To get the six, and, and, and I'm gonna be, go back to Ralph's comment. Then I said this earlier, uh, my concern and Rusty, you did the sixty thousand square feet off of four hundred and thirteen students?
Yes.
If you do three hundred and fifty, it's less than that.
Right.
So we're not going to think about doing a pre-K to eight building. What are you gonna cut? You still need all those spaces that you have. It's, you just have to sell the fact that you need that space and you don't have a bunch of access in there. And I think we've shown that already to the state, um, and, I mean, Tammy said that when we were in DA, you know, meeting with DAS. Um, Scott Coleman said that when we were meeting with DAS, like, they've heard that several times, but they won't give you the guarantee until you're. Which is annoying.
Um, two things, you mentioned before Rusty that if you had fewer than three hundred and fifty students. You get a couple more square footage per student? Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, if we did the math, um, if this number is based on four thirteen, but in fact, we have three thirty-seven. Would we get a significant amount of extras for footage or no?
Well, what'll happen is actually. The three thirty-seven, now you're multiplying three thirty-seven, so for instance, instead of a hundred and twenty, uh, square feet per student. At the pre-K through. Four level. You're gonna get a hundred and twenty-four square feet per student, but because your overall number is declining, you would actually end up with a smaller building.
Okay.
So it's gonna have a negative impact on you.
Smaller number of square foot based on the smaller number.
That's the point I'm getting, and that's, yeah, well, Arthur was saying for two, that. We have, we're gonna have to do an enrollment study, but I wanna prepare you that if the enrollment study has the. In, in the eight-year span that we have to show, if the highest number is three fifty, your new number is three fifty, it's not four thirteen. If the highest number is three twenty. That's your highest number, that's what they're gonna base the square footage on.
And we have to use that document.
And we have to use that, that's why I was asking, how old can your enrollment study be? And I think the answer is not, right, Rusty, like.
It should be current, I mean, you, you know, it's hard, people will do, uh, one year old or something, but it, it's really should be a current. Projection.
Four years, that's like half the life of what it should have.
We still have this year on it.
I feel like we could argue that.
Now, back to how to. Of, elicit, um, feedback from our residents. Um, if we. Share this with them and then. Arthur, you were talking about putting dollar figures on it as a way to further engage them. Took some of the numbers from this. And put these together and did some kind of a survey. And you could even link this document and then leave this document and someone that really wanted to study it and take a close look. And provide some feedback could do it that way, or is that too complicated or?
I, you're gonna wanna see that as a board before I put something out, I mean, if you're talking about next Thursday.
That's not gonna happen.
Uh, you know, for a week turnaround to do that is.
Or maybe after the meeting when they've had a chance to hear all of, all of this.
And I don't. Could we even have numbers for that? I mean, the problem is that, like, one of the problems with the last school building committee was there were so many numbers and that was so amorphous, like.
That's true.
We, we wanna have, like, if we're gonna do something like that, we'd like to have numbers that actually are meaningful. And this is what will happen if this is added and does this have value to you?
Right, so that's kind of a different category from what the previous numbers in school building they were, because the way it was laid out, those are all fine. That was a, if we, and they were all big numbers, it was like, if we have an auditorium, we're gonna have this, if we. You know, do something, if we don't have, or if we get the space waiver, if this, we don't, I'm just saying. If we're talking about modifying the ed specs and getting town feedback on modifying the ed specs, I think that's a much simpler task by basically, you could. Really drill it down if you wanted to, and you could, you can put a number to a classroom, because you could. You could work the numbers to get something to say, this is about the value of this classroom, if, if you wanna add. A flex classroom, that's fine, it's in, in the grand scheme of the project, it's gonna add fifteen hundred dollars, just like all those lines, and those obviously made up numbers, but. You could really add, you're talking about the value of the things you wanna add or take away from the ed spec. Yeah, I think that's a much simpler, simpler ask, it's a simpler visual than a, than the whole thing.
I one hundred percent agree with you, but we have to still have that bigger number in order to get the smaller number.
True.
So I feel, that's what I'm talking about, like, I. I don't wanna have all these. Numbers out there that people are using to make decisions if it's not the real number.
So what if we take baby bites instead of like the whole elephant? And ask the question, um. Something like a heading, giant piece of post-it note in my head, but a question about class size. Um, have you feel about increasing class size? That's the question. Then give the data about, here's what the ed spec has, two classrooms per, um, was it K four? And then a pre-K four, and here's the flex space that could be used for this, but there's only one of them. Would you want to add a classroom for each grade level? This is some of the other things we could do. Add classroom at a grade level, add some more flex spaces that could be used as classroom. But that's all under the umbrella of like, the class size that also has to do with staffing. Just taking little smaller bites, would you like to include vocational instruction? Here's what we have so right now, here are some options that we could do. Maybe if you. Then, you know, like if I'm a parent and that's my issue, that's the thing I really wanna pay attention to, then I'm gonna for sure. Or even a person in town who is passionate about such things, that's the one I'm gonna focus on and that's where I'm gonna get involved on that question.
So what if you did this? What if you had? A basic just piece of paper with the ideas and a checkbox. What's important to you? Small classes, small class sizes, is a tech program important to you? Is multiple pre-Ks important to you? Is, uh, our breakout space is important to you, or, or flexible, uh, breakout better?
Yeah.
But in that way, you get, it's a very simple, very high level, okay, we got a lot of checks for multiple pre-K, we got a lot of checks for small class sizes. So it doesn't really. It doesn't really, yeah, right, but it gives a big overview.
On Thursday, you could just write that at the door and people could just check it off and leave it.
Right.
Interesting. I like the idea of that because I feel like just from. The feedback that I have gotten, it doesn't seem like people want. An informational mailer sent to them, you need the horse and pony show, you need the Kirby salesman vacuum guy going and doing the spiel of. Why, you know what I need, why we need X, Y, and Z, you know, it gets, oh, well, you know, crap, or nope, I don't want this, I don't want that. Like, any average person is gonna read it, it's gonna see dollar, dollar, dollar signs flashing, but you need to sell the why, you need to sell the vision. And I feel like, you know, just establishing a culture in a community and our little. Niche town, um, I think we've been missing a lot of that, and I think people want to have a conversation, and I don't know if that means doing. Uh, multiple public hearings to see what people say, I think that style survey that you said is a good starting point to be like, hey, what's important to you? And then we can collect that data, but that's only going to be on my new percentage of the people who come, like, how do we get? And that's always been, and the, the problem is, how do we?
And that's where, as a board, you make the decision, you're elected officials to make that decision. On what goes in your aspect, so you're basing on any feedback you have, which is exactly what the SBC did. And whether people slap their wrist or not, they make decisions based upon the feedback that they had.
Okay.
So, we did the.
A zillion.
So many dog only shows, and, you know, love Ralph Toulis, but I mean, Ralph was at every single thing, like, hi Ralph, how you doing? Like, you know, like, he was every single one, I knew he was gonna be there. Um, he was looking for each, you know, the feedback each time, and, and, but. We weren't seeing new faces, I think that feedback would help drive your ed spec. Like, i- if you're gonna consider a program or consider something. What would you, you know, if you just had an other, what would you wanna see as including the ed spec and other blank? They could write it in, you go, okay, let's talk about that. Because you, the dollar thing is hard, and Rusty chime in on this. The, the, the challenge I see about the dollar thing is because it, it, it impacts space. And then the, it's, it's not, you can say an auditorium is gonna be three million dollars, but you didn't know if you're gonna get a space waiver. You didn't know what your percentage reimbursement was gonna be, it was calculated, but it wasn't guaranteed, right, Rusty? So same thing, we could put a dollar amount to an additional flex space. But it might not be real.
So if I, uh, look at, uh, the discussion, I mean, you're, you're, one area is whether do you do sort of, uh. Uh, uh, industrial arts or wood shop type space for, for the steam program. The reality is they're not that different in size, I think the, the wood shop type space would be slightly larger. Uh, you don't have to, you could decide what that space needs to be, I mean, there is steam or, or a shop space. You could decide that at any time, but you can carry that square footage in your, in your, um, ed spec. As a way of getting beyond, you know, while you're getting, uh, information. We can then take that and, and let's say we, you know, you decide you need another flex classroom. Let's take the ed spec that you have and add those two components in there or anything else, uh. And, and that gives you sort of a, a, a basic, uh, program that you can start. Thinking about how does that all work and, and, and now you can truly. Start looking at what the cost implications are for program that size and what does it do, and we can look at it only in terms of. You know, without the space standard waiver and with a space standard waiver, so you could, those are the two extremes, right? So just to help you understand the cost implications versus, um. You know, and, and, and sort of to help develop the program itself, because I, I don't. Know if you're really debating or you have so much, uh, concern about. Uh, the number of classrooms, or maybe you do, I'm, I'm, I may not be reading it, but I think everybody's looking at maybe one or two flex classrooms. To allow for a bubble and then again, the, the steam space.
I think the advantage we have this time that we did not have last time is that seventy-nine percent. So now we can go to our residents and say, if we build a school that costs this much. This is how much it's going to cost us and this is how much the state will pay, we did not have that last time, we. It could have been anywhere from forty to sixty, though.
You just wanna, you have to be able to stay with your ed spec. This is what programs are going to be included, this is what's in that.
Right.
Dollar, the big dollar figure you're talking about, Chad, you need to be able to say. Either there's, you know, family consumer science or there's not, right? So that's what you wanna have in your ed spec, so if you. Your data collection from the community is like, hey, email the superintendent or show up to one of these meeting, meetings. Meetings, if you want us to discuss something in the ed spec, we can consider it, we think it's, you know, you think it's something that should be put in. You put it in, like Rusty said, right now, I agree with Rusty big time, this the steam and the 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 square footage difference for the steam and the app and the um. Tech and kind of space wise is consistent. If you said you were gonna add a flex space for every grade. That's gonna be significant in the overall picture, um.
Can we consider? Um, like the HVAC arrangement in a steam space? Because would you not need a exhaust fan if it were to become a winter?
Well, you're still going off of, you're going off of square footage to get a number.
Yeah, I know that.
And then you're working within a budget, so if you said, hey, we have a science lab with two, they both need ventilation, we have a now have a, instead of a steam space. We need a ventilation in that room, you might go, hey, to stay within budget. We have to do this flooring instead of this flooring. Is that right, Rusty? Is that?
No, that's correct, and and we're at a conceptual level, so the budgets are really more square foot based and. And really a steam program space on a cost square foot is probably fairly equivalent to a tech headspace. Um, so I wouldn't be as concerned about the the difference in cost there. It's really all about how much more square footage you wanna add. In terms of program space, cuz that ultimately. Will develop the the project cost, and then the reimbursement will be developed off that, and I think. If the concern is everybody wants to know what the guaranteed number is going to be. We can just say, here's the program that is appropriate for the for the school, for as a pre K school. And based on our reimbursement rate and and the. The enrollment uh, space standard factor, put it in there. We'll get, you know, you'll have a number that you can then understand is that that's your worst case scenario. And then if you can do better than that by getting a space standard waiver, then that would be. You know, an improvement on what the net cost is.
Blooms.
Celebration.
But doesn't the cost include like the equipment and the furniture?
Yes. But we have, what we do is we carry standards that that um, are fairly typical for most. You know, every district, there's there are ranges that we work with. Uh, so that gets factored into the estimate.
Yeah, that works for everything.
Right, it's a per student basis.
I- i- if you were gonna put in some elaborate heating system and there's no electricity, everything's solar. That's not factored into what he has right now, right?
Right, yeah.
That's, so you're, he he's working within a a the average range. If you were gonna do something really specific, you'd have to put it in your ed spec and say. We're gonna be building off grid school and we're never gonna pay an electric bill again. You'd have to have that in your ed spec and make sure you stuck to it. His average is that that cost is kind of built into that average.
I also like the idea of thinking about the science rooms as possibilities for consumer. Economics or, you know, you could.
That's where mobile furniture is important.
Yeah. Right, set up a little equipment in the corner, and when it's not being used for science, you could do.
So from an ed ed spec standpoint for you. If I started doing. The checklist that Arthur's talking about and just put a bunch of things in there. Um, I might have to put some definitions in there, what is a flex space, or what's a, you know, breakout space? Um, what's a a quote-unquote tech ed space, like what's some of those things? Um, what's important to you? I could do that and just share with you, and you could just respond back to me and say, uh, add this, love this. And then I could just have that ready, whatever data you get out of it next week, you get out of it.
That would be great, please.
Please.
Could we, talking about class sizes, could we um, say that this particular one has two of each class? If you value smaller classes, it may, we may need to add some classes which would add. Cost, or somehow. Help them to understand the. Connection there, cuz that to me is probably the most important thing. I I really feel as if I would love to see. Three of each class, and then what we're not using would be conflict space or breakout rooms or.
I think you'd get rushed.
Okay.
As you look at your enrollment projections, there are some grades that there's going to be. A time when there's only thirty two students or thirty four students in that grade level. So that means, and for two classes, there's a classes of sixteen students each, or seventeen students each. Uh, and then if you have a third class, for each grade, that means, you know, you're, you're not gonna break that into three. And thirty four students into three.
Yeah, okay.
I think for the purposes of this exercise. I think we have to come up with a loose definition of what a small class size is, if we're gonna just gonna put small class size. Because someone's small class size might be thirteen and somebody else's might be nineteen, so.
Value.
Right, do you wanna just have a just a generic less than? Blah blah blah, whatever, whatever you wanna put there, just.
What do you think? Which side, which class size would you support, thirteen to fifteen, sixteen to nineteen, twenty to twenty four? I can just do something like that, and let them check something, or that will tell you your section.
That's good.
Does anybody else think that we should have, and maybe not necessarily for. This meeting with Tammy, but just in general, some type of informational flyer to. Cuz I know that there's a lot of people who don't understand why we're talking about this again. Just be like, hey, based on the last, since since the last referendum failed, this is what. This Board of Education has discovered, the cost, whatever our points are, that brought us back to. Why we're even discussing a potential new school project. I really think that. The majority of the town needs that information, and I think that, like I said, we just need that little segue. Bullet point thing of like, hey, just so you guys know, this is what's going on, cuz people are gonna be like, oh, we're talking about, oh, they're trying to sneak it through again, and they're just doing it until they get their way. We need that. That's how I feel, I don't know how everyone else feels, but I just think that it would be good. And transparent and informative to be like, this is why we're talking about this again. This is what led us to get to this point.
I think it would be helpful to have it come from, um.
Damn.
All the boards, right, not just us, because I think. I mean, if we were able to do that, have some kind of like. Statement like that, I think that's a great idea, but if it comes from us alone, it's just us. Like, it's a townwide opportunity for this reimbursement. It was a bipartisan situation, I feel like those are all important things that should just maybe not. Just come from us, but I don't know how that would even get on.
Um, so one other interesting thing to share, remember at in. Sam, we, I think we both connected on 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 social media about this. Someone asked the question about. Why are we talking about this again? We thought we were just going to fix the schools. Could you please share at that meeting the paper that you gave us at the end in June? That itemized every single thing that was repaired in the two schools last year. So I think that really speaks to, yes, we're repairing the schools, but we're repairing them within a. Operational budget, um. Which makes a permanent fix more important, so, right? Didn't you remember that?
Yeah, and I had shared um, my copy of it to that just specific group text. Uh, or not group text, they weren't that long thread, whatever you wanna call it. Um, which was this paper that we.
Right.
Which was around forty six ish for one school and forty nine for another school, but that was just. To that particular thread, it wasn't to like, hey, just so you guys know, here's here's some maintenance, we've been doing this last year, maybe to. A Wellington pager from the public school pager, however you wanna post it, just so everybody sees it and can.
Yeah, it shows them what fixing the schools looks like. You know, in one year, this is what we've done to fix the schools and. Which creates the need for the bigger, a bigger fix.
And it wasn't even really.
Updating, it was just putting out tires. It was just putting out tires, and there's more to come.
The the target there that those comments are about is. Two million dollars, that's.
Well, we could explain the plan to use the two million dollars to reduce that first year for taxpayers, right? Right, about for the bond, right?
Well, that's an option. I'm not so sure that people will agree with that option. You should think about that much ago.
Oh, sorry. Okay, Rusty, you don't need to hear us hem and ha. Jumble any longer, I'm sure. Thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate. Thank you.
Feel free reaching out to me anytime, you know.
Bye, Mike.
Thank you.
Sam, I I agree with you, you asked that question, you know, it was really interesting. Agree with you about. Informing the townspeople of why we're doing this again. The same question comes up again, how do we get that information out? Because. What percent of the population is on Facebook or on, when we have eight days before that meeting? So I guess, like, how is that gonna happen, or is are we, were you thinking it's anyway before the meeting, or just? In the next few weeks?
No, I didn't think that we'd be able to do it before the meeting, cuz the meeting's next Thursday, I'm ready. Um, and I think it's gonna have to be something. thoughtful, um, and maybe I'm overthinking it, but I I think that. And I know certain things cost money, but. I think we have to try to exhaust all avenues of like, you know, we have digital backpack, but then how do we reach people who aren't like having people? Go to the transfer station, do we wanna do snail mail flyers, do people actually open those envelopes or a postcard, um? But I thi- I think that it's a conversation that needs to be had, cuz I know a lot of people are like, what, we're talking about this again, and I don't know.
Well, I think there is, there is an opportunity. For this in another way, because we are in a. Local election time, so. Soon people will be canvassing all over town, and it's an opportunity for us, um. People who are running for election to, if you, you know, talk about this within the town, the problem is. Um, getting, I feel like we have a little bit more momentum right now that's in a positive direction. From some of the comments that I've heard of people, the seventy nine point six four percent being. A positive thing, it's bringing in a bit more bi- bipartisan. Buying across the community, I feel like, maybe, I'm hoping. Hopeful for that to happen, because I think that's what has to happen. It feels like the last time there was. So very, some division happening of two sides, and then there was, but there wasn't just two sides, there was. A lot of division going on in different directions, and then we all ended up in the end saying. Well, why didn't it pass? And we have one side saying it didn't pass because of this, and the other side is saying, you know, there was like. Ten different reasons, but there probably could have been a hundred reasons why it didn't pass. But we need to. Figure out a way, and this is that same thing, but. Maybe by meeting as a group next week, we can sort of start to build that. Network that can keep spreading out further, we, this is the, these are the facts, this is the amount of money we have. Um, and have that momentum that we've seen in our town happen. Against the gun range, um, against the big warehouse. But in the direction of what can we do for our students to give them the best that they need? That's gonna serve our town. And get the support that's spreading in a positive direction instead of all these factions. So I I don't know how to do that, and that's always that problem, but I think we're in a in a place right now that are. In meeting as a group next week, we we can start to make some momentum here.
Did the previous SBC ever do a survey asking why people voted no? Did we have, did they ever get that information, or be like, okay, well, why, like, I know there's a lot of surveys around.
I think that was discussed, I don't think you heard.
I agree, I think that at the end, you guys tried to wrap up and talk about a survey, but then there. How do we disseminate it? How do we get it back?
Same, two hundred people are responding.
Well, I I think something I've heard in other towns, they do even during. Their budget, um, referendum now is. Yes, no, why? And then there's some choices, too high, too low, or other. On the ballot, that can be included. I don't know how that happens, but I heard it happened in, it was. In Brooklyn this year, during their budget uh, referendums.
Maybe if you have a paper ballot, people could write it in.
Or or it's an exit poll, as you walked out, after you painted your ballot, then there's like an exit thing.
I think I saw in Tallins for their budget referendum, they had. Yes, no, and then a secondary like. Did you think it was too high or too low, or whatever, and they could fill in that.
They floated it for a third one.
Right, and we never did.
Wait for process.
Yeah. But, um. I think that if. If we, well, never mind, I'm gonna reset that.
If you have the why, what do you do with that information?
We're gonna answer.
Change something?
Well, in terms of the rest of the building, it's not gonna help, I mean.
That's kind of what I'm asking. I'm just, so when, when are we doing this? Why?
Well, you could do it in this checklist, would you support a major renovation on a new building? Checkbox, or would you only support? I know.
I I I'm almost feeling like. This needs to be sold as it's going to be. It's gonna be this, it's gonna be new building. You're willing to say it's gonna be renovated soon, or it's gonna be nothing, like that's. It, that's what we're signing on, and here's, it it may be, but I I don't think. Once I love data, I don't think. Trying to. Get the appetite of fifty five hundred people or thirty four hundred people pretending, um. It's gonna be feasible, so I. I just think this conversation's good, and these are all good things to have, but I think we're way ahead of where we should be. I think, and I wanted to ask you. What do you want us to do for a week from now, from Thursday? Like, what, how do you want us to be prepared going into that meeting? Cuz that's, you mentioned before, you know, you know, if that one bite. So if we're going, our next step is that is that meeting on Thursday, so we've got. A potential checklist to grab data there. Do you want anything from us on the on the ed specs? Are we gonna wait for feedback on that? Like, how do you want us to be prepared going into Thursday's meeting?
You mean as far as answering questions?
No, just just in general.
What should we all be doing next?
Yeah, basically, what 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 do you want from the bosses of board now?
Based on the conversation tonight. Spend time back here, thinking about the things that we talked about, and there was a lot of. Pros and cons for making different choices, um. I mean, ask people around you and try to come up with some creative solutions for for issues that we came up with, like, what do we do about the. Classes per grade level. Um. If you could make a wish list, what would it be? And it's just so tricky between, I think. What I need to ask of this group is to be ready to make some really hard decisions. That's probably the biggest thing I could ask. We should ask of each other, and it's really hard because as much, uh, of course, we want input from everybody, we could wait. Twenty years to hear from everyone, we just don't have that kind of time, so we may get ourselves in a spot, guys, where we have to like.
We can.
Pick something, and I hate that, it's not comfortable for anybody, and it surely just stinks all around, but like. That's the business of it, that we're gonna have to face at some point, so. I guess being ready to make a call and doing as much digging and. You know, creating thinking, like I said, as possible between now and the point when we have to just like, make some tough decisions. Um. Some of the things I heard you guys saying, I mean, I just kind of was trying to keep a list, so here's, maybe this will help me. Some things that you all had questions or comments about had to do with not enough storage. Um, how to add a pre K so more students can. Um, how to add a precase so more students can attend and and suggestion was, you know, like putting the those classrooms at the end of a corridor so we could potentially have an addition added on to that part of the building at some point. That was a good solution. Um, is that important to the town? Is that important to you? Um, adding the industrial arts area with the shop and et cetera. Um, instead of using the steam space for that, couldn't the steam stuff happen in the classroom? Couldn't flexible space so it could do multiple things? Like, I understand what Rusty was saying about it's the same square footage if we wanted to do steam versus um, like a wood shop thing, but you're talking like, you know, that's why I was asking about the exhaust ban. If you're having wood shavings all over the place, don't you need to consider that? Any equipment for is obviously very different too. So that if that's all included, like especially new school, new site, you have to get all new furniture or consider the cost of new things that you would need for new programming. So are we basing our expects on programming? We don't have or wanna have? Are we basing it on stuff that we have now? That's kind of all goes with that particular topic. Um, not having enough classrooms per grade to keep our classroom sizes low. That is so tricky because it involves space, it involves staff. And we have no idea what the future holds for our little town. It could be that we have a huge giant boom, then what do we do? It could be that our enrollment keeps declining, then we have empty rooms. What do we do with them? Like, that's just a super tricky one. So um, I think we kind of have to make that decision looking at like an eight-year period. What do we think's gonna happen in that year? Eight-year period is probably the best way to do that. Um, let's see, Phil was talking about the um, changing our middle school model to just seventh and eighth grade. So that helps with the class size and the spaces. That's something to think about. In my head, sixth grade through eighth goes better, but he said the certification for staff is pre K six and then seven, eight. So that's a good reason why to split it that way. Do other people think that sixth grade is like way too late to be having a contained classroom? Um, okay, needing to involve and educate all the people, especially non-parents. How in the world are we gonna do that? Are we sending mailers? People really love yard signs right now. So are we gonna make a thousand yard signs? Are we gonna get that chalk paint stop and write it on my car? So when I move all around, people don't have a meeting on the fourth. Like, I don't know. That for me personally already feels frustrating. But I guess keep asking the question of how we do that, you guys. Um, I love the idea of bringing in the community to into our schools. That's, like I said, I'm always trying to say the public's invited, the public's invited. How do we get them involved? I would love to have people who are certified and licensed for various vocational things come in and work with the students. That would be fantastic. Uh, and then the question of why we're discussing this again, it was super uncomfortable to talk about this at all right after our budget and even like during during the failed books. Like, we were, I was sitting here like, oh man, this is not the time. So I did try to say, and I think we all know, like, the new reimbursement rate is a huge reason. And then as we went through our budget, having one building was going to decrease our cost in a lot of different ways. So based on those two things, and maybe you guys can tell me another, it's always good to have three rather than two reasons why are we are talking, even talking about this right now. This wasn't a dead in the water. Why are we talking about this again? I think that's two. Maybe you could come up with a third one because that would spread around the flyer also. Um, and so we're gonna go and listen, I guess, be ready for questions, but mostly hearing out what people have to say. What do other towns do? I went to the cave work that last fall. They were talking about boards of education that have a tent and they have their T-shirts and they have their tables. They have like a whole setup and they just take that thing all over the place all the time. That's great when you have a town that's got a community center and a big like sports complex. We are super stoked to be at the dump all the time, but but like, where, where, how else do we do this?
Another idea, thanks from you asking any for answers.
Yeah, these are things we need to work on.
And the answer, one answer that I did hear at a cave conference once was a community that had a school fail. I can't remember. It was down southern part of state, I think. And I can't remember if I shared the stuff with Bill or not, but they had a school fail and then a building project fail. They went back to the table and they actually superintendent this selectmen that like the major people committees in the town that came around was organized, but whatever. They came together and then they went and did like went into community into each neighborhood and they had somebody who wouldn't welcome them through their home and invite the neighbors to come over and have a discussion. I don't know if that works. Would work here with our boards. I know we went and had meetings, but it's it's a time factor too.
Pizza at multiple.
I know. It's like, it's a, it's a, and it's a huge commitment because to to hit every neighborhood or by splitting the town into little sections. So you could go to those places. It's a lot, but that's what they did. And then their building project passed the next time, but they also had a united group that was from the top. So the selectmen, the, you know, the major parties at the top of the um, boards were working together.
That's definitely.
For a, the same purpose and that's not always happening.
We do need to collaborate with these other groups that are on the invitation for the fourth, like.
So hopefully next week that.
Maybe that's a way, something else to think about is how we build that collaboration and start there with everyone feeling included in having a say too.
Phil, are they coming? Did anyone respond to you? They haven't responded?
Well, the, I mean, I know. I have no idea. On calendar, I'd like. Maybe I say it's no.
What is the agenda for next week? What is the, what you're doing to set this up or?
Yeah, but.
Oh, you have.
Present to speed. New business is review of new legislation, a school project reimbursement rate, which of course lends all of this other discussion. Uh, present to speed, of course, and then a German.
It's a, that would be Tammy and then Rusty is the um.
Tammy's doing the legislative presentation. Rusty, I think is coming on to be on hand. Maybe, yeah.
I think somehow we should present. I don't know, the experts are, are we not there yet or?
I don't think they're solid.
Possibilities as.
Do you want to put these out when we're not sure this is what we're sticking with?
Well, I'm trying to elicit feedback about this, right?
Right, yeah. Well, I don't want to put it out anywhere, having people think this is, oh, look what they're doing, this is what they're doing. Like, that's kind of dangerous.
I don't want necessarily listen to feedback. Then I just want to listen to feedback.
About the question that we've talked about.
Yeah, that that informs.
How we.
Yeah, so we could say that we are working on the aspects, but we would like feedback from the community about these topics.
There are um, on page three of the big one from the October twenty second, uh, two thousand twenty-two, sorry. Very long view. And each three is all of our um, like our mission and our reason why and our purpose as a board, as a just school district. That's a good thing to read or review if you have it recently because that really like, it's all about the programs. So you start with programs, you build your head specs off of that. Then that's what's gonna make your school building. It's super tricky when you add in the dollar amount because now you're like, okay, but like, can we afford that? Can we have that? You have like your wish list, which your program requires bare bones, which your program requires to really want to give our students, what you want to give our students. Um, our program's like extra awesome. And then you have that money piece where you have to like try to budget it. And we're really doing so much guessing. It's just very difficult. So see where you sit, see where you stand, I think.
You would do those things, I think, if you were going for a very specific turf field complex and auditorium, a swimming pool, something that was extraordinary, I would say, out of the norm. Your classrooms are not. That's not the discussion, right? You're, you're, if you're adding, you you know, big dollar things, you would probably get feedback on it. If you're just talking about a couple spaces to be flexible for, that you could use for other things too, that just knowing that if we had a larger class size, it's gonna become the classroom. If it's not being used as a classroom, it's going to be used for X, Y, or Z, right? And you can do those things, but that's typically where you would. You know, if you were gonna add a field house, right? You wanted to add extra, something major outdoor space for learning. That's where you would have those things as separate for for dollar amounts, but typically not. You don't have any extrapolating your expectations. You really don't. Your extravagant was an auditorium. And 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 this, the, at the time, they didn't believe it was that extraction. They just thought it was something that was to work out. It was necessary.
There was giant feedback about it. That's why it became a big thing and it wasn't sliced from the beginning. We had a particular board member who was very adamant that we include that in some way, shape or form. Um, and so that's how that ended up happening.
If you walk away, and next week might not be some grand decision, great presentation. I don't think it's meant to be that. I think it's more along the lines of what Tammy shared at your meeting. Let people chime in. You can listen and get, we'll find out what they're thinking. You can get some survey information and call it a day. I mean, it's one, it's really, it is one agenda item. Um, the purpose, though, is to have all the people there that can help move it forward with the same conversation. C I P or selectmen or finance or that. That's the group that's been talking about this and needs to be on the same page. Hear it from her, right? I think Jeff is gonna be there too. I don't uh, you know, I'm not sure. Um, Jeff Gordon, um, but from the standpoint of the just gather some more information. You have all the board to do before you start doing public presentations.
We have a timeline, right? Like, I can't remember. I think I asked this question before. Let's start from the back of the timeline. So we have to put forth a project to the state by certain dates in order to lock in this sort of like June, right? June thirtieth or is it like June thirtieth, right?
No. The Rusty is, you can apply anytime. It's up to June thirtieth. That's when the applications are due. The, the, the special legislation only lasts so long.
Yeah. So I want to know where the end of that is and let's back it up because right. So like, we need to be able to look at a calendar and be like, okay, by this month, we better know what we're doing about this step. By this month, we're gonna have to have made some choices about whatever, because that's probably the best way to plan a big project, right? Start from the back end. And then make, I mean, obviously those are like flexible, soft goals, timeline goals, but I mean, the time we can't just, what are we gonna do? Make specs for like a year and then what, you know?
There's, we have to remember those. There's a timeline for us. And once we hand out the head specs to the S B C, we're kind of done and they have to go forward with everything else. We have, we have liaisons, we have representatives and all that kind of stuff, but as far as us as a board, they need the edge special, so then the S B C takes it from there. So they really have to worry about the timeline. Like, they have to worry about getting all their stuff done. Like, we just have to get them head specs and a timing.
So we need to timeline it back.
Yeah, well.
Because we're holding the end up.
Yeah.
But they don't exist.
Well, so potentially.
Right now, they don't exist. So we're not holding anybody up right now.
So what is the year that we have to apply by? Six or seven?
You're eighteen months in the deal with the special legislation. I think there's a lot for the share.
December of twenty-six.
And the other S B C was out.
I'll also tell you that Rusty's not wrong in his numbers. I can tell you, if you don't apply by June of twenty-six.
Not gonna happen.
No, it's it's not. It's not gonna happen. It's that your cost is going to go up.
Oh, yeah.
I actually, Tammy, looking at the shooting, she was gonna look into it. I asked her about, I'm like, this is what was provided. You didn't mention this. Can you take a look at it? She's like, I'm gonna take a look and see what, see what that's really about. So she might have more answers next week. Uh, that was the cap, that was the cap on the reimbursement of these phases. That was, that was the thing going on at the end of June.
Well, maybe she'll end up.
She might, yeah, she might know more.
I like your idea of a timeline for us.
Give the S B C.
The other thing. Hunted over the S B C.
We don't.
What do we have to do? No.
Just to finish.
Give them the information.
And the other thing to consider regarding time, and I don't want to bring this up, but I show, uh, we have an election in November and some of us are um, would like to be reelected, but may not depending on how the chips fall. So that could cause some disjointing in the group. I'm not saying let's hurry up and get this done before the vote happens or whatever. Um, but that's, and that's another like, there's a little bit of a speed bump there as far as like information being pressed on. So if you're, if you're planning to run for the Board of Education, uh, please make sure you're attending all these meetings because it's very possible that you may need all of this information so that you can help the rest of the group figure out what you're doing. Thank you so much.
The longer you stretch out your conversation about head specs, the more draining it gets. People are gonna disengage. You should have your head specs approved in six weeks. That's like getting, you have a conver- had a conversation tonight, but you've got to put like date, date, date on the calendar and say, we're gonna be here, we're gonna be here, we're gonna be here, we're voting on this date. It's, you know, our, I'm just making this up, November board meeting, we're voting on it, right?
That will be helpful too, because when we get to a vote and people pick because they don't know, and then we ask them why, like, it's way too late, man, like, what do we do at that point? So if we have a calendar or timeline and we say to the public, we need to know your thoughts on the aspect because on this date, we're making a decision that gives them a little bit more of an understanding, like, oh, jeez, that date's really come up. I gotta pay attention. What was I gonna do about that? What did I want to say about it?
Right.
So that might help the engagement a little bit, also by putting kind of like a duty on things.
And it's not about project. It's not about what project.
They're.
It is about what you, your head spec still stands. Well, if you do, and if the voters know, your head spec still stands. You're gonna start fixing things with money based upon what you have in your head spec. That's what you're gonna do. If you want breakout spaces, you're gonna have to fix a space to have a breakout space in what you currently have. If you want to double vest people, you're gonna build out what you currently have. You're gonna do those things in your current buildings.
And in the meantime, there's like a zillion projects that need to get done that are like on the pause button half the time because we don't know where we're going. So like, that should be, people should know that too. There's a little bit of like molasses situation because it's such a cause and effect.
It's in our job to make a recommendation as we did last time or not, just pass to the building, the building committee that there's two options or one option. We recommend to the Board of Selectmen that they form a school building committee.
For the purpose of.
Consolidate is what I said last night, right?
Right. You can say whatever you want. You can say, we believe this is the right choice, but then they can do what they want.
Selectmen sets the charge. So that's where that would be written, either this project, this project, or just to say consolidate. And he, can they be that specific, the selectmen, when they need the charge?
Specific in the charge they want.
So we can make a recommendation. The selectman does what they want regarding the charge and the formation of the S B C. So that's where, that's where our hands like let go.
Will we give them a timeline with that or no? That's.
There are times they get going, but maybe we could do that by.
We started, we can give them the information about deadlines and maybe a recommended timeline schedule so they know, like, this is just FYI, like, here's your, here's your windows.
Introduce.
Yeah.
So if we um, now, the first meeting in November may have new members.
Correct.
Well, new members who are sitting for the first time, you're ready to make a vote like this.
That's why I'm inviting them to the end of now and listen now.
You're seated right away.
Yes, I'm true. I can't.
I think it's.
So it's only selecting. One that ends in, as far as I know, I know Legion ends at the end of the month. You get through November, but.
Hold on, I like showed them.
Yeah, you, it's good to hear when you were right away. Yeah.
Well, I I was just saying that, I mean, obviously I said six weeks, but I mean, six weeks is the middle of October. So I wouldn't say November. I was just saying throwing out like a ti- like, I can, I can draft an head spec timeline for you.
Yeah.
That is, but. That is, but. I mean, no offense, when I say we have to meet like every week or three days in a row. Uh you have to have a forum to do it.
And I wasn't trying to say hurry up and do this in case there's no people.
Uh that's not why I'm saying.
That there may be an interruption in the information. That's why it's.
I think as a board, we all want the same thing right now. We want the building to go through. So getting it through with this board in case of a change is a good idea.
Yeah. I also think that the S B C is gonna need as much time as possible. So the quicker we can do the stuff that we need to do. The quicker we can get it to them to get, I mean, June is not.
Yeah, it's only like seven or eight months away.
Alright, so what do we say? Setting a timeline.
What do we need to do? We need to do edge specs and we need to draft a char- a recommended charge, right?
Not the charge. We recommend.
Right, but we, right, right. Well, there's things in that recommendation that it's not just, it's not just, hey, don't make an F B C and we're done, like, cause that'd be clear.
Hand them our edge specs and say, fuck.
Yeah, but you don't, so you don't want any details. You just wanna be like, we recommended you to look inside a school based on the edge spec.
That's all we're allowed to do. I know.
Alright, well, then it's just, then it's just that specs.
You hand your baby.
But you were just talking about recommending in, making recommendations for the selectmen in the charge. I just didn't know how far you wanted to go with that.
They make the charge, we could.
No, I get that. I'm saying, Phil was saying. You, there was floated the idea that we make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, what what might want to go into the charge. So I'm saying, if we're gonna do that, that's gonna be something that, that's a lot simpler than just. Here, you get specs, go make it S B C, you know what I mean? And that takes a little bit of thought of, you know, what are we? What are we thinking? So I'm saying, is, do you wanna add that to the list of things that need to be done by a certain time?
That's why we can turn the. Edge specs in, yeah, but you have, like, it's a very, it's a totally informal and could be completely trash. Recommendation on our part. That is something we need to acknowledge.
Yeah, but it's the opportunity to be like, okay, a lot of people, like Lori said. Like I said. Wanna know, not that they have to try to figure out two projects, but just an idea of, okay. Give a couple of options. What's gonna happen with the other buildings? That was a big point of contention where a lot of people did say no.
Okay, so we're gonna give them that specs. We're gonna.
And that could be a part of a different meeting, like, hey, what do we think we should recommend them to add to the charge?
He did last time was recommending a new building, not even a piece of land. I believe that was what came from the board.
No, it said pre K to eight school. If it had been, if it had been new on new, then there would never have been a statement about anything else. That's why, uh that's why the S B C was able to do so many different options because it just said pre K eight consolidated.
Oh, okay, good.
Alright, so I expect a recommendation for our project and other charge items we think might be helpful. That includes. What to do with old schools.
Timelines.
Yep, that's the next thing I'm gonna do. Uh recommend timeline. Given the fact that we wanna take advantage.
Who's doing that?
I'm just making us a list of things that I want, we, we need to make sure we package to get to um.
Who's drafting a timeline?
We're talking about. Um the June twenty twenty six deadline, right, to get the application to. I will make a. What so why are you, what are you thinking?
Cause there's no agreement on what. Uh what the timeline is.
I think we could have a discussion about what would, some marks in time where things should perhaps be done.
Be done like June twenty twenty.
Which I understand could be totally tossed out. It's just a recommendation for us. I can't tell them what to do. We know that. But we wanna keep things on track. They need to understand that we're, we have a ticking clock here and really need to.
Timeline, Brianna, is. A project, if it's a project is gonna be. You have to have enough time. In your timeline to submit an application. Applications are due. At the latest, June thirtieth unless you have special legislation, right? Which means that's the end date. That's what they have until. Every other timeline before that. Is set by professionals, not set by a board or or superintendent or or selectmen. It's not. Like, think about Scott Pelman's timeline.
Yeah, he had a very.
He had a very specific timeline. He created that. That didn't come out of the S B C. That didn't come out of the board that. That came off a professional that knows the timeline and the process to get a project.
And then they would have a person.
And if it fails, you need enough time. That you still wanna access your reimbursement rate of seventy nine percent to do your projects. Like if there's no project done, you have that special. Does that make sense? And it's just gonna be a roof? You still want seventy nine percent? You don't want sixty five?
Well, so then they need to get on this even sooner.
That's why I'm saying the, uh it's really about the end timeline.
Yeah, I'm looking your way back again.
True.
That also means that we need to get this order to them ASAP, like that we have a meeting October fourteenth. Maybe could that be our end date to work for that we can make our recommendation?
I feel like these things are gonna come together at a different. Not right now. These things we're gonna pull together through our conversation. I mean, we're gonna have to meet again to get our edge specs straightened out anyway. So that's when we're gonna decide on a project. Right to recommend. Hopefully together.
I'll pull all those last votes. I'll pull, I'll go back into those minutes. I'll email you what the. Exact language was that was sent, what was said. Um they they developed the charge and when the charge was developed, it was a collaboration between the first selectwoman and myself. But she, she researched a bunch of other charges in that had been done in prior years, whether it was Wilmington or other towns. And she brought to me and said, I'm missing something. Like that's, that's how that charge was recommended. And then they, the selectmen went from there. They had a a base.
Alright. And you, will you work with Peter? Yeah, okay, good.
So I'm almost thinking. You should set a due date for the recommended charge for September, for our September meeting, because we can. We can send that recommendation early while we finish up the specs, cause again, it's gonna take some time to get the S B C collaborated up and running. And you just figure by that time, this at least. Gets the process moved, gets the process of building and moving. While we finish up that specs and then by the time they're. All together and scheduled, I think they'll have, will be done with edge specs. They'll have everything that's the most that they need.
You said we should be recommending a project and recommending.
I think we should be recommending the charge items for our September meeting.
Which is September sixteen.
Wouldn't that include? The. We have to either say consolidated pre K eight. Or. An option.
We don't have to, there is no other options. Consolidated one way or the other. It's either use who'll decide or shit.
You don't wanna be, think we should be specific. About our recommendation because that's not like a thing they have to do. It's what we think would be the best option.
I don't.
Cause they don't have to accept it. It's a suggestion and you're you're voting on it, I think you did last time.
Basically, it's an unofficial. Kick up to the, to the selectmen to say, here, this is going while we finish, cause we're, we're moving.
So as someone sharing this as options, recommend things for the charge, including what to do with the old schools.
Do we wanna make recommendations on who we think should make up the S B C? Wasn't Tammy saying?
Tammy, Tammy has suggested.
There's no, there's a legal thing. There's specific people you have to have on them.
That's what she listed off when she was here.
So you'll, you'll do that with Peter, right? Decide who, which kind of people go in maybe or no or yes or. And who, who decides?
I don't think there's like a law about it. Doesn't it come down to the. Or does the state require you to have certain individuals?
They require one person.
You have to have a selectman, you have to have.
Nope.
Superintendent.
No.
No requirements.
There's one requirement, and I'm not trying to throw Tammy into the bus when I say this. You have to have someone with building experience.
Yeah, okay.
That is the legislation. That's the requirement. That's clearly in the. Grant application. You have to have someone with, with building experience. That's the requirement. There, the others typically you add in, so you have a mixed board. So. I was not a voting member in the S B C. I was a resource, right? But you had. They laid it out last time, so that way there was a couple of community members. There was, you know, Board of Finance Representation, Board of Select. It was meant to have some sort of community. Global community representation. That's how it was built, because that's what happened in nineteen eighty. There was eleven people or ten people on it and that's two parents. It, it can be built. She explained the way Holland chose to do it. That was different. Did they have someone on that? Um and had building experience? I have to assume so because they passed the project.
Yep. And some people wear multiple hats, so you kind of get a.
Correct. But I'm quite certain that the only person that they mandate, you have to have, you have to have the school building committee, right? So I guess that makes two people. Um and who the second person is, they don't say, but one of those two people has to be a. Has has building experience. Most places do a larger. Committee to have representation.
Okay. One, ask the. V O S Department, S B C, recommend charge items. And including what to do with the school buildings if they are left behind. Two. Recommend a goal end date. In quotations, because we need, we need time to figure out in the case of a fail. How to use the reimbursement money for the projects that are necessary right now with the buildings we have right now. That's super important, if you ask me. And telling them why we, that has to happen is also. Critical, yes. And the meantime, we're working on edge specs. We'll happen to them by the time their S B C is on the line. Then it's like. Out of our hands. Then it's our job to attend the S B C meetings and make sure, yeah, we advocate and we know what the act they're. Doing and talking about so that we can sort of make adjustments on our end. That sound good?
So do we wanna work toward um Panther School of the sixteen? That's only two weeks. Two weeks ago. Is that the second?
Cause.
So you're right, you're right. That means this, one year. Oh. Well.
I, I, I think we can, I think we as a board can hammer out a good. Honestly, generic charge or generic recommendation for a charge because they could be whatever, but at least this gets the process right. I think you can handle that. If we know that we're, that's what we're gonna do now. Not prepared to do it, I think that'd be.
Okay, just to restate what you need to be prepared to do it.
It's also going to take time for them to get the, the um school building committee up and running.
That's when we're doing edge specs, so we're kinda spinning it around.
Yeah.
Or making things go while the things are. Yes. Did I answer your question about what we need to do?
Yeah, actually, I think we have a good direction.
What do you think? We need your.
He's over there like, I can't believe. Actually, we're on the right track here, spinning around, spinning around.
In nine days.
Um at the beginning of the school year.
Keep your expectations realistic in nine days.
Possible for you to. Email us the former charge of the S B C. Do you still have that idea?
Sure.
Okay, that would be good, cause then people can take a look at it. And please just keep in mind and know that whatever we tell them for that could. It's a recommendation, a very light, friendly recommendation, and they can take it early, but we have no.
How are they gonna be presented that recommendation?
We have.
Email or at a meeting or?
We have to formally request it, so I would assume. So does it? The charge goes to Peter. The recommendation to form S B C. That also is a recommendation. Is it a request to form an S B C? Oh, God, sorry. I'm doing semantics at you. Is it a request to form or a recommendation that it tells us?
How about I just say I will have everything for you. For what you need. For your September meeting to make. Your recommendation.
Before.
I, if you add anything else to the list, I might, I might say no. Because your list is pretty lengthy right now for a. It is five days. It's, we're talking about like, I think, five workdays, six workdays.
But we can, you all could also go find the charge very easily.
Well, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. I can find all those things. I, and and. I mean. You want the checklist, so there's preparation for Tuesday. What? Sorry, Thursday. I think you want some sort of letter flyer I heard for why is the board discussing this again?
I don't think.
That doesn't, that's not, doesn't have to be any time to string it with just.
Yeah.
Well. At this meeting.
And are we running, I, I didn't hear you about that. Are we running this meeting?
You're at your.
Who's in charge of this agenda?
Your, um.
Yeah.
Your agenda times for edge specs.
I'm asking this because you brought up the re- top, top three reasons why we're talking about this. And if this is my meeting to run, then I'm absolutely gonna say that at the beginning.
Say what?
Why we're talking about this again, well, right before I introduced Tammy.
Perfect.
So that.
It's a joint meeting requested by the Board of Education. I, my gut is that you are the, the primary voice. For getting it going. Because we're the ones that are posting the agenda, so you're the primary.
Perfect, right here. Restate why. Okay, what are the other things you think? Yeah, we'll make it, but we don't need it for Thursday. The checklist, that's number one.
Well, didn't you just say you're gonna say it on Thursday?
I'll say it. We probably also should have some sort of. Flyer.
Why would we, I, I, I'm confused why you think we need the flyer necessarily.
Cause people all around town are like, why the hell are you talking about this again?
I agree with you. I think. For all the naysayers, this will be really good for them to have all the reasons. Felt out that we're bringing this up again. And that kind of brings us back though to that, maybe you could put on the back of it. The, that paper you gave us about the repairs that were made. Last school year in the two schools. As one reason that we're talking about this again. If we do make a flyer.
That doesn't have to happen in a. Right away thing either.
I honestly think if, if you're going to, I think your idea is good about. If, if you're gonna do this meeting, we're gonna have this joint meeting. I think you speaking as to why. Even having this meeting and having this discussion. Is sufficient for where we are process.
Yeah.
And then let Tammy take it from there.
Yeah, and then, and then like in the future, if you wanna. Design stuff and have it out, ready to go, you know, for. Just, just to have it out there. That's a great idea, but I don't, I don't.
Transfer station.
I know, cause Sam's saying about like. I'm just, what are those things called? The, the placard where the.
And that would be the checklist, the um check the box. Survey.
Yeah.
So what else were you gonna say that we put on your plate? Now, there was also a lot of talk about people not having enough time to speak and things like that. The last time we had it, some all related to. Does anybody remember?
It's present, there's present to speak.
Uh and that was a five minute limit and that's just like always.
Okay. I would assume.
Okay.
We also, we have the policy where kind of can invite people in and I don't know things too, but I probably believe. Wouldn't. Use that because. Well, unless our president speaks, it's gonna be that important. That'll have to be something to consider, cause people should be able to ask their questions. It's gonna depend on if we have like eight hundred people with their hands up.
And how many Tammy were getting around about this? How is? How is it being advertised? Did it go hard in the school, um, did it, put it, or is it not?
Good.
Could, could we do that in the school flyers? Um and then maybe on um the Wilmington town page on Friday.
What?
Doesn't have to be done by N A. Or by this Friday, somebody throw it up there, but.
It could be, couldn't it be like one of those calls that? Goes out, good.
From the school, yeah. Those are good. We, especially if we did that like the day before, if we sent it out in the um. The wires on Friday and then maybe have a. The wires on Friday, and then maybe have a call the day before and search your parents. And then also the Wellington Town email page, we put it on there. Um, and then that place on Facebook, there's Wellington. Friends and neighbors or whatever that is.
You know, if Ann Phil or Selectmen's meeting, then they can do it after meeting on Tuesday.
Today, yeah.
You know, I'll hand it to Board of Selectmen's meeting on Tuesday.
I'm pretty sure that they do. I thought I saw.
Number second, yes.
Yeah, okay, so then. They, we get, you know, they're gonna just be like, hey, can you mention us? Just anybody who might be watching and just gotta get the word out that way to them.
They can mention that the president is.
I don't want to hear, uh, two, uh, no, Tuesday won't hear on Tuesday, it'll be. Be personal. Somebody else will do it. Anybody else will.
Okay.
Maybe you can just forward the letter you've already sent, and see if they can read it and correspond to. Are you, is that, did you put that on your list or should I? Okay.
Hey, you know, planning is only in the meeting here on the second too. Email, email won't too. I know it. This point.
That's just gracious. Well, you have to do it all, so you can say, look, we tried everything's impossible. Okay. Does anybody have anything else they wanted to comment on this particular topic before we open up President to Speak once again this evening? Okay, let's move to Agenda Item. Five, which is our final President to Speak. Yep, um, we're gonna. Okay, we've got Jamie, would you like to start?
Hi, um, this, can you hear me okay?
Ma'am, we got.
Okay, thank you. This is on Jamie Copark seventy nine Common Road. Um, I missed the first part of the meeting, so I hope I'm not, um, covering anything and my. Have to apologize in advance. I've just been taking like random notes and ideas, so it might be a little all over the place, but, um. I think to Ann's point, utilizing the, um, the townwide, you know, when there's like a meeting, meeting to notice and we all get the email. I think that might be a good way to get people who maybe not on Facebook, but, you know, get those email blasts. Um, and I know not ahead of this, um, next meeting, but. Something that will be happening between now and November is canvassing, and I think that's a really great way when you're already engaging with people. To get the word out to people about the school building and get their perspectives on it. Um, and it is like very much, I think, like a bipartisan thing, so I think even if all the heads came together, it is something really important for our town. Um, and that could be a way to get information out or about future meetings. Obviously, between now and Tammy speaking is not very much time. Um, I was also thinking if that meeting with Tammy is gonna be recorded, maybe. You guys could do like an email blast again after that with that meeting, so people who might not have heard of it or didn't have time to go, they could re-watch it. Cause I think that could really be helpful. Um, or people that are like, oh, my kid has sports, I can't go and that kind of thing. Um, I think, um, from my, like, you know. Parent perspective and just like being observant the last time this, um, went around. It seems like every time something is going on with there's some kind of vote, there's like the groups of people, uh, you know, and you're basically naturally gonna. Gravitate toward what it's part of life you're at. Like, if it's something to do with seniors, typically it's the seniors that are kind of gravitating toward it. Um, when you have kids in the school, you're gonna be more, um, engaged with this, and I think, um. To try to get everybody more on board, I think. Um, kind of finding ways about the new school, like how it can really benefit everyone in town and really focusing on that, um. For example, like say the new school would have a track, right? We had money in the budget for a track and like now we can have spring sports, like, um, you can have track and field or, you know. Um, seniors, anybody, parents, families, they can utilize that track to walk. I mean, we have the athletic complex, but it's not necessarily the most even, um, terrain for people. So I think maybe just trying to find little, um, trinkets that could really be beneficial to everyone in town. Um, I wrote down, um. I think a lot of what you guys have to do right now, and I feel empathy for you, is you have to undo what was done the last time at first, and I think. Last time, it was just so confusing. Everybody was inundated with information. Um, there was almost too much information and conflicting information. Um, I really liked when Tammy was giving her ideas about how it really focused on making this. A community decision for the community and having everybody's voices be heard. Um, I liked how she wanted, you know, everybody gets to vote yes, no, um, or, you know, rebuild. Um, and I really think the way that she, Talland it was, um, designed their building committee was really great. She said it was one Republican, one Democrat, and a person from Public Works. And those three did interviews for the rest of the board, and, um, they wanted a landscaper, uh, someone who may be in HVAC, someone who's in finance. To the point that you can get that, and those three people, the one Republican, the one Democrat, and the Public Works person had to pick unanimously for the person. To be on the school building committee. And as a citizen, I really feel like that is so impactful. It really. Makes you feel like a valued, um, community member and that, you know, the boards want your opinion on it. So I liked that idea, um, and I think really hitting home, um. If you do, Brianna, like in the beginning of the meeting, say why we're doing this again, I think it could be really beneficial to. Really hone in that we want. We're listening to you, like we got your opinion the last time, um, we heard you loud and clear, but now we want. Your voice to be part of this, cause I think innately when people feel included, you're more inclined to gravitate toward like. What is better for the community instead of just putting your feet in the ground and just being stubborn, like I'm not gonna do that because you said to do it type of thing. Um, and then I think, um. Oh, and then just my two cents. I think that you should do present to speak after Tammy talks, cause a lot of that meeting, if you did present to speak before she speaks. Is gonna be just people taking up a lot of time, um. Saying things and asking questions that may be answered, and that's just my two cents about it, but, um. Yeah, I think you guys are doing a really great job with all of this and, um. Thank you for doing this. It's, I know it's hard, cause, uh, the people are, can be quite, um, loud on the internet. Um, oh, and to that point too, I think, um. With Ann's point, um, I did see a post too of somebody asking what's been done with the schools and the maintenance and all that with the money that the, the school wasn't being built. And I think there needs to be a, a lot of discussion about like how two things can't exist at once. You can't say, why aren't you fixing all the stuff when you won't vote through a budget to fix the stuff? Um, so I think like your guys' point about having something come out that shows like what the budget is and how hard you're working to try to fix the things within a very limited budget. Is like a really good idea too, so just my few cents. Thank you.
That is a citizen paying attention and being engaged. Thanks, Jamie. Appreciate all that. All right, Mr. McCoo, you've been waiting a while. Mike, you still with us?
Yes, I am. Um, it let me unmute this time. It won't let me turn on the camera, but that's fine. You don't need to see me. Um. Okay, so a lot of stuff I had written down, you guys ended up covering throughout the rest of the meeting, so, um. Excellent job on making my comments shorter. Thank you. Um, the. I do, um, echo a lot of the things were discussed, and particularly, I think there's something to be wrestled with, which may be the SBC's challenge. And that is. Not only how to move quickly, but how to figure out how much. Needs to be done in advance. I think that was an important lesson learned last time about how much we can do in advance of the vote. Fortunately, the legislation is more in our favor this time. Um, but again, it goes to your conversation about. What is our drop dead deadline and how do we work backwards from that? I think that was very prudent to be thinking about because the timeline is fair, fairly short. For example, on this topic, the SBC is gonna have to have some sort of design assistance. Um, in place to be able to define. Uh, to take the ideas for the project and turn them into a plan. And, um, so that has, all of that has to go to prove the money for that. The townspeople have to approve the expense. We have to hire somebody. There's a lot to do in that time. Um, so I think the conversation about the schedule and the milestones is super critical. Uh, and then something that you all have commented on even until the last couple of minutes here is about the communication. Again, lessons learned last time, and, um, we even hear you talking about it and wrestling with it in tonight's meeting is. Having clear communication, current messaging, not having too much confusion about what was the old messaging. And that's not that you're keeping the information secret. It's just saying, you know, here's the old information. It's in this bucket or this location or whatever you wanna call it. And here's what's the new stuff, and here, here's what's important right now. Here's how we're moving forward. So clear current messaging and it needs to be as much as possible from one voice. Um, the committee, it is traditional and normal process for. Community communications to come through the chair only unless assigned. Um, there may be a communications group. There may be someone assigned to a project like Arthur was just talking about. I believe what I understood, um, that he was communicating with Tammy. Um, so I'm assuming that that is something that was assigned to him or, uh, is understood, or there was concurrence that he would be the one communicating with Tammy. But I think Tammy made the point herself. That we need to be organized and careful about who's communicating with who, who's sharing what information with who. And that is, when I say we, I look at that as a townwide issue. That's for every board. That's for all the people involved. Um, you know, everyone's got their right to free speech and everyone should be able to contact their local rep. You know, if I wanna call Tammy or Jeff or anybody else and just babble at them all day, that's my prerogative as a citizen. But when these committees work, we really need to make sure there's sort of one voice for each of the committees. And that, that represents sort of the decision or the concurrence of the committees. Um, and as we all know, we wrestled with that on the last school building committee, and, um, I'm hoping it's a lesson learned for a more efficient way this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've got one hand, but that was already spoke. Thank you so much. We are gonna close President to Speak. Um, and we are ready for adjournment, but first just let me say, I hope, look forward to seeing everyone Thursday, September fourth at the whole school library, seven P M. For a special meeting with other boards and groups to talk about all of this fun information. We need a motion and a second for adjournment, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Then, all in favor? All right, we are adjourning at nine twenty three P M.